Half a day, good morning, welcome. I hope we're all recovered from our Easter weekend. Speaker Therese sends her regards. She's under the weather this morning, so is her vice chair. I will be conducting the hearing on her behalf, and we wish her a speedy recovery. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. The time is 8:37. With regards to public notice and compliance with the open government law, notices of these public hearings was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, March 25th, 2024. Five-day notice on Friday, March 29th, 2024, the 48-hour notice as well. Notices are also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislative YouTube channel. General rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asks that those presentants to please be quiet and refrain from moving around and within the public hearing room. Additionally, we have asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who are presenting oral testimony are invited to submit written testimony afterwards in order to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator. Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, the public hearing again is April 1st, 2024. Who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair? After all have testified, senators will be recognized for five minutes of questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senator or any person testifying. The hearing is to collect testimony not to debate or to engage in back-and-forth arguments with the participants. Rerating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, allow them to answer. The agenda items. There are several items on our agenda today. The first is Bill 183-37COR introduced by Chris Barnett, Senator Jesse Luhon, Christopher M. Duennas, Joanne Brown, Telo Titegui, Duane San Nicholas, Jose Augustine, Sabina Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Roy Canata, Thomas Fisher, William Parkinson, an act to amend Section 25.15b and 25.20b to Chapter 25 of Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to engaging higher minimum sentencing requirements for individuals convicted of first and second-degree criminal sexual conduct involving victims under 12 years of age. The second bill is Bill Number 239-37COR introduced by Senator Chris Barnett, Jesse A. Luhon, Joanne Brown, Sabina Perez, Duane San Nicholas, Telo Titegui, an act to amend Section 67.401.4a and B and Section 80.39.2e of Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to sentencing and fine enhancements based on the quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl involved in the trafficking or manufacturing of these drugs and to remove first-time offenders. Considerations of the Justice Safety Value Act for illicit drug trafficking and manufacturing crimes. The third bill is Bill Number 243-37COR introduced by Senator Duane San Nicholas and William Parkinson, an act to add a new Section 11318 to Article III, Chapter 11, Title VII Guam Code annotated relative to removing the statute of limitations for financial and property exploitation of an elderly person or an individual disability. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, and I see certainly to my right, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Jesse Luhon, and Senator Duane San Nicholas, and Senator Chris Duennas. Thank you, my colleagues, for joining us this morning. The first item on our agenda is Bill Number 183-37, and I have a listing of those that testified. But before we have those who sign up testify, would certainly like to extend the invitation to the prime sponsors, Senator Chris Barnett, certainly to introduce the bill. Good morning, Senator Chris Barnett.
Vanessa, good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity again to introduce the bill. I would like to wish everybody in attendance a belated happy Easter. And also just note that April 1st is the beginning of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And on that note, I am looking forward to testimony on Bill Number 183-37. What the bill does is it implements Jessica's Law on Guam. Jessica's Law is the informal name given to a 2005 Florida law, as well as laws in several other states designed to protect potential victims and reduces sexual offenders' ability to reoffend, which includes a mandatory minimum sentence of 25 years in prison and lifetime electronic monitoring when the victim is less than 12 years old. A version of this law, Jessica's Law, also known as the Jessica Lunsford Act, was introduced at the federal level in 2005 and has since been adopted by 42 states. Under current law, the punishment for the first-degree criminal sexual conduct is a sentence of 15 years to life in prison without the possibility of parole plus an additional three years of supervised parole upon completion of the sentence and release from prison. Under current law, the punishment for second-degree criminal sexual conduct is a sentence of five years to 20 years in prison without the possibility of parole plus an additional three years of supervised parole upon completion of the sentence and release from prison. Additionally, the Vulnerable Victims Act may apply to sex offenders who commit sex crimes against vulnerable victims, and this special sentencing enhancement for crimes committed against vulnerable victims is five years to 20 years incarceration. Thus, the minimum sentence of imprisonment under current law for an individual convicted of first-degree criminal sexual conduct is 20 years, 15 for first-degree CSC and five for vulnerable victims. The minimum sentence of imprisonment under current law for an individual convicted of second-degree criminal sexual conduct is 10 years, five for second-degree CSC plus five for vulnerable victims. Now, what the bill does is it raises the minimum incarceration sentence for those convicted of first-degree CSC against a child under the age of 12 years from 15 years to 25 years. Thus, the minimum incarceration sentence for a person convicted of first-degree CSC against a child under 12 is 30 years. That's 25 years plus the five years vulnerable victim. The bill raises the minimum incarceration sentence for those convicted of second-degree CSC against a child under the age of 12 from five years to 10 years. Thus, the minimum incarceration sentence for a person convicted of first-degree CSC against a child under 12 to 15 years is 10 years plus the five years for vulnerable victim. Recent magistrate complaints, it's horrifying. I've shown that recidivism remains a problem among child sex predators, and it's my opinion that the surest way to keep our children safe is to keep the offenders incarcerated for a very long time. With that, Madam Chair, I look forward to the testimony provided this morning, and also again thank my colleagues for the support and the introduction of this measure. I think anytime you look at the news, it's horrifying what's being done to our children. There's a war being waged in our children, and we have an obligation as good citizens of this island and this territory to do our utmost to protect them, and I believe that this bill is one way to do that. Seidos Masi, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnett, for your introduction on your bill. For the record, the committee requested feedback and testimony on Bill Number 183-37 from the following: the Office of the Attorney General, the Judiciary of Guam, Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense, the Guam Police Department, and the Guam Parole Board. As regard to legal review of the bill was requested from Legal Bureau on March 26, 2024, and the response from the Legal Bureau was received on March 27, 2024, stating the bill remains subject to review as to form and style. Summary of the bill of 183-37 is the proposed legislation extends to establish minimum incarceration penalties of 25 years for those convicted of first-degree criminal sexual conduct and 10 years for those convicted of second-degree criminal sexual conduct of a child under the age of 12. In addition to this, the bill also permits the courts to impose parole for offenders convicted of first and second-degree criminal sexual conduct for the rest of an offender's lifetime following the release from prison. With regards to the fiscal note, an impact request was sent on October 11th, 2023, and BBMR responded on August 24th, 2023, stating that according to the comments received from the Office of the Attorney General and that the bill does not ascertain any immediate fiscal impact. However, the Bureau notes that there will be potential impact to the Department of Corrections relative to incarceration, specific costs such as costs for meals, health care, clothing, rehabilitative services, and other associated costs and services while imprisoned for a longer period of time. The committee will now receive testimony on the bill, beginning with, and we have a list of those that have signed up so far. We have Louis Hardley, Shirley Antilon, Yolanda Elliott, Ray King, and also, of course, our Attorney General Douglas Moylan. Please come forth for those of you deciding to testify on this bill. Are you all from the Attorney General's office? You're...
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Shirley Antilon. I'm representing Guam Behavioral Health and Healing Hearts Rape Crisis Center.
Okay, why don't we begin with you and allow you to testify then? We can allow the Office of the Attorney General and Attorney General Douglas Moylan to provide his testimony. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. The Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center respectfully submits this testimony in favor of Bill 183-37, an act to amend Article 25.15b and 25.20b to Chapter 25 of Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to enacting higher minimum sentencing for individuals convicted of first and second-degree criminal sexual conduct, including victims under the age of 12. Imagine this: a person being sexually abused or raped almost every day on Guam. Most of the victims are female. Many of them are children. These assaults are taking place in their homes, relatives' homes or family functions, and the victims are assaulted by somebody they know. It's easier to close your eyes to this epidemic until it happens in your home, your niece, your nephew. Under the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Healing Hearts Crisis Center, also known as HHCC, is Guam's only rape crisis center on island who has been providing services of victims of sexual assault and abuse for over 30 years. Services that are provided is intake and assessments, referrals to medical services and treatments, therapy services, and outreach and educational awareness in the community. HHCC has seen many cases where minors are victims of sexual assault of both first and second-degree criminal sexual conduct by a perpetrator known to the victims, parents, siblings, family members, et cetera. The statistics for HHCC from January 2023 to December 2023, HHCC had serviced 74 clients. 65 are females, nine are males. Of the 74 clients, seven were between the ages of 0 to 6. 18 were between the ages of 7 to 12. 20 were between the ages of 13 and 17. 18 were between the ages of 18 to 24. 19 were between the ages of 25 to 59, and two were over the age of 50. During this time period, Healing Hearts has had 12 acute cases, which means these are reported incidences happening anywhere between 48 to 72 hours of the assault. Statistics for January 2024 to March 2024, we have seen 21 clients. 18 are females, three are males. Of the 21, three are between the ages of 0 to 6. Four were between the ages of 7 to 12. Six are between the ages of 13 to 17. Four were between the ages of 18 to 24, as well for ages 25 to 59. We're already up to four acute cases as of March of 2024. In looking at the Guam Sex Offender Registry, there are currently eight offenders who have failed to register as a sex offender. Of the eight, three are offenders of first-degree CSC. One is an offender of the second-degree CSC, and the remaining are third and fourth-degree CSCs. Likewise, there are 33 offenders who have failed to update their status. Of the 33, 17 are offenders of first-degree CSC. Eight are offenders of second-degree CSC, and the remaining offenders are third and fourth-degree CSC. And this is taken out the Superior Court of Guam Sex Offender Registry. Guam Behavioral Health is in support of Bill 183-37 to have higher minimum sentencing requirements for individuals convicted of first and second-degree criminal sexual conduct involving victims 12 years and under. We are also in support of having a lifetime monitoring of those convicted of these crimes as a means to monitor sexual offenders and predators on our island. We do have one recommendation, that convicted sexual offenders receive mandatory counseling to learn special strategies for stopping abusive behavior and taking responsibilities for harm done. It shall be determined by the provider when counseling sessions are completed by noting the change of sexual offenders' thoughts and behaviors, addressing areas of trauma for healing, and reducing revitism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Antilon, for your testimony on behalf of the Guam Behavioral Health. We certainly appreciate your submittal this morning. Attorney General Moylan, I'll give you the courtesy of extending the introduction of your team that is here, and I assume you will provide testimony unless you have others on your team that are going to provide testimony or provide response with regards to Bill 183. Welcome. It's always good to see you.
Thank you, and happy belated Easter to you, Madam Chairwoman Brown, as well as Senator Barnett, Senator Luhon, Senator San Nicholas, and Senator Duennas. To my right, I have Assistant AG Louis Harley, and to my left, I have Assistant AG Lee Miller. Senators, we are clearly in support of Bill 187-37. This is from ground zero that we're seeing in the AG's office, and I've said it many times before. Guam has too many sexual offenders and pedophiles per capita. That was an election issue when I was running for the office, and it remains an important priority for the AG's office. But I'm here to talk about the logistics of the problems that we've been seeing and how important it is, not only that the legislature passed what is the equivalent of Jessica's Law, but that you take away any discretion with the courts, that if our juries determine guilt for a pedophile, characterize as 12 and under, I guess, as the law talks about, that you have mandatory life sentences without parole. Now, people might think that that's harsh, but I believe that the professionals, the psychiatric professionals, will tell you that the ability to reform a sexual predator or pedophile specifically are very low. Once a pedophile, always a pedophile. And that has been the type of philosophy that I go about when enforcing our laws and working with the team of prosecutors that we try these cases with. Now, the safety valves in the system are the AG's office to first vet the cases to make sure that it isn't some internal fight between the father and a stepfather, which I've seen many times in the past where the father gets the child to make an allegation against the new boyfriend in the mother's life. Those can be vetted out and have been vetted out. The idea that you've got a grand jury that is a safety valve when they listen to the evidence, the prosecutors can see whether or not the grand juries will be convicted or, I guess, passing a true bill. What is the breakdown of the 2021 grand jurors? Do you have unanimously that they all choose to pass a true bill or not? You have the judicial process, which has motions to dismiss between the time the case is charged and then the trial, and you ultimately have the greatest safety valve, which is our jury that must find unanimously and beyond a reasonable doubt that this person is guilty of the crime accused of, the crimes alleged. And then the final safety valve is obviously the governor. If a person has been wrongfully accused, the governor has the pardon ability to pardon the person and have that person removed from jail. We also have the appeal process with the Supreme Court of Guam, as well as the habeas corpus. You know, like you hear in the news that, hey, they finally did a DNA test on the person, and this is not the person that hurt this person. The court has its own safety valves, the judiciary, called the writ of habeas corpus. And then the reasonableness of any attorney general that they would see the information after trial and after all the dates have expired to give the citizen the ability to get out of jail. So, when I say that we should, Guam should adopt a very strong statement through its legislature, the public policymaking body, that it will not tolerate pedophiles and that you shall go to jail for the rest of your life without the possibility of parole, I believe that this is the culmination of what we've experienced in our community and a clear statement to any would-be pedophiles. Just this morning, I'm hearing that the Philippines, they're tagging anyone on the US database that may be on the sex offender registries and then turning them around and getting them out of their country. Well, Guam can have that same type of mentality that anyone that enters our jurisdiction knows that if you're a pedophile thinking you're going to get away from the States and do your crimes on Guam, get ready for staying the rest of your life in our prisons. Now, the four items that normally prosecutors look at when they charge crimes is the protection of the victim. That is the most important aspect of any criminal prosecution, to protect the victim. The second one is the deterrence, which is in a form to protect future victims, that the statement made by the legislature in this case and then requiring the courts to, once the jury convicts for this type of crime, you shall not get out and there is no discretion, is a very strong deterrent in our society. The other ones are the punishment of the offender. Well, you know, that's whether people want people to be reformed or stuff like that. That goes to that issue, and then the restitution to the victims. I ask the legislature to please consider bringing back the bill that has yet to be passed to give the people a speedy trial right. One of the problems with these cases, and I asked Christine Tenorio, who's our sex crimes prosecutor, winning track record for our office, is that these cases are taking too long to get to trial. Defense attorneys are inherently looking for whatever angle that they can get so their client gets off. That's our system of government. We need to allow the prosecutors the ability, when all the information is fresh, especially in the young victims, the trauma that continually goes on of having to deal in a pre-trial mode is tremendous. I've literally had victims in crime cases in prosecutions in the middle of trial speak with me about why they're changing their testimonies, whether it's the mother not wanting the, you know, telling the child, hey, you know, you don't want to do this, you know, this is a person that's helped us in our life, stuff like that, family members for that matter, and that's the type of situation, boyfriends and family members. These are those incest-type crimes that are occurring with pedophiles. At least there's a large percentage of them. And then trying to convince the jury who's hearing these different testimonies. You get, on the one hand, immediately right after the crime's committed, they're reporting it, saying that this person hurt me, and then six months, a year goes by, and the person either can't remember, is too traumatized to want to remember, makes mistakes on the stand, and then a jury, rightfully so, is going to say, it's not beyond a reasonable doubt, I can't convict this person. If you give the prosecutors, we AGs, the ability to tag certain people that maybe had a lot of complaints against them and take them into trial within 60 to 45 days, just like the defendant does, when the memories are fresh, the victim wants to testify, and all the other witnesses can help convict this person, you will do a, you'll give the spirit of this law the actual implementation effect. You know, we all know that legislature passes pieces of paper, but it's up to the prosecutors, the Guam Police Department, Healing Hearts, Public Health, in order to put that case together, take it to the judge and the jury, and then, you know, bring it home so we actually get a pedophile off the street. And once you get that pedophile off the street, don't put him back on the street because the effect of doing so of all the types of crimes out there are more likely that they're going to victimize another child. Whether you put him on the sex offender registry, information isn't actual stopping them from hurting somebody. The only way that we know as a society to stop them is to put him in DOC and lock him up. The castration, the chemical castration law that we were able to kick out, the draft to the Department of Corrections so we can get those rules implemented, remember, it only applies to parolees. That means that these guys are already getting back on the street if we're talking about the under-12-year-old type of pedophiles. It does nothing for purposes of a permanent castration or the, you know, there's a physical, the erection idea. Traditionally, they've approached it that way. If you stop it, it isn't going to happen, at least in that form. We all know that pedophilia and rape is a crime of violence. So, you're still going to get this person acting out in some way, but you're not going to get maybe some of the problems, the more severe problems where the minor becomes pregnant or, you know, the adult for that matter. So, I think that all these deterrent effects that protect the community should be enhanced. And I think that the committee and Senator Barnett, you may wish to have a discussion in the legislature about, is this time enough? You know, enough is enough. We got to stop playing games with the pedophiles and start putting them in prison and locking them away. The Catholic Church has worldwide realized the effect that this disease in our communities, in all our communities, has. And Guam has a chance to not only pass the Jessica's Law, but make Guam a no-pedophile jurisdiction. So, it's with that that I respectfully ask the senators to consider building upon this life imprisonment without the possibility of parole to protect this, to truly protect this community against our pedophiles that are among us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney General Moylan. Is there anyone else here who desires to testify on Bill 183 before we proceed? Attorney generals or anyone else on your team you would like to provide testimony? Or are they just available to provide comments to questions?
Yes, they are here to provide the support for any questions. Thank you.
I appreciate your testimony. I also want to note for the record that the committee has received written testimony on Bill 183 from the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness and also the Public Defenders Services Corporation. With that, we'll have Senator Jesse Luhon provide any questions or comments he may have on Bill 183.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and belated, happy Easter to everybody as well. Thank you very much, General, and also Behavioral Health, for your testimony this morning. And I, again, I'm open for discussion and debate and more on, of course, mandatory life imprisonment without possibility of parole. Yes, this community is, yes, just sick and tired of, almost on a daily basis, not on an hourly basis, we're reading about these pedophiles and, you know, the release, you know, and their previous offenders as well. And so, that being said, I wouldn't mind, hopefully, maybe that debate will move even further to take that in consideration. But that being said, I'll wait for further questions and comments. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhon. Senator Duane San Nicholas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would prefer that they pay this crime with their life. But I think, I think the Supreme Court, if I'm not mistaken, has already ruled that a crime like this doesn't rise to a capital offense. So, I don't know if that's, you can comment on that. But I support this measure, and as a school counselor, I firsthand, you know, had to listen to some of the victims who have gone through this. This is kind of something, the thing that happened to Jessica's, we had something similar when I was a young customs officer. There was a little girl who was put in the dumpster after she was sexually assaulted. She was probably, what, maybe three years old or something like that? And at the time, I was going to training, but it was very, very heinous. It was a very heinous, it was horrible. And anything that we can do to protect our young, we have to do it. So, I support this measure, and I thank the author. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator San Nicholas. With that, Senator Chris Duennas? Then we'll wait, but certainly like to recognize Senator Jose Augustine, our colleague, for joining us this morning. Good morning. With that, Senator Telo Titegui, do you have any questions or comments on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not at this time. I think it's self-explanatory, and based on the Attorney General's comments that were made earlier, it's justified. And I feel that any kind of other research or information that's needed to ensure that we're not stepping on the judge's foot on allowing the discretion of a judge to make a determination based on the circumstances, we have to keep that in mind too as well. And so, I do want to ask the Attorney General that in that consideration, you know, of allowing certain circumstances to avail themselves... allowing certain circumstances to avail themselves or ensure that it's, this person is dead right guilty, you know, in every aspect of the word before moving forward. What do you think the courts are going to feel with this kind of legislation?
Well, you know, the legislature has a long history of mandatory minimums and mandatory sentences. So I believe that constitutionally, the legislatures of the United States have the ability to set mandatory minimums so there is no discretion in certain types of crimes. And that is a strong statement from the lawmaking bodies. So to that effect, it would be your discretion to pass a law that would make it a mandatory life imprisonment without possibility of parole. So that would be my response to that question, Senator. Not within our discretion, not within the court's discretion, but within the legislative branch's discretion. We have examples like the mandatory minimum for DUIs of 48 hours, the meth cases, which I'll be talking about a little bit later, they have mandatory minimums. Whether or not the courts are implementing them is going to be another question, but yes, I believe it's within the discretion.
Do you find that these changes in legislation that increase is the timeline that they, you know, are incarcerated or the punishment that's given to them becoming harsher? Is it actually making a bearing in the community and doing it, what it's intended to do, to deter?
Thank you, Senator.
Is it working?
You know, this is why I mentioned the four purposes of prosecution. To me, whether you want to punish somebody or not is within, you know, the judge's discretion and a lot of people have different opinions on being tough on crime, being soft on crime, whatever. I focus upon the crime victim. I focus upon the future crime victim. The most important thing that the legislature can do is protect us, right? That's what we all are told when we get sworn into office. The pedophiles have a low ability to be reformed. That's why they're always being watched after. But how can you tell that to a victim or to a parent of a pedophile that they let this person out and gave him a chance, and then they went back and victimized somebody else or went and revictimized the same individual? You know, these are the stuff that we have to look at, the practical application of the law and our laws that we pass. And I'm only respectfully sending to you a message that Guam has too many pedophiles, we have too many sex crimes per capita in Guam. My, the reason why my prosecutor's not here, Christine Tenorio, she has been in a constant mode of prosecuting these sex offenders, you know, whether they're pedophiles or adults. Since I took office and since she's come back, let alone whichever other prosecutor had to deal with it, we literally have maybe two prosecutors that are actively preparing for court trials, because these pedophiles and the sex offenders in general know that sometimes asserting speedy trial or waiting and then pulling that case when the AG's office numbers may be low or they may be reading a newspaper for some purpose of a tactical advantage, they're doing it. The defense bar is doing that. And I give them credit, you know, they're trying to protect their clients' rights and so forth. But to actually get a prosecution and conviction, once you get that actual conviction, that is usually a very hard-fought and rare event, because you get so many cases, and I know it daily, when I'm getting a phone call saying that the victim doesn't want to testify anymore, or they've left island, or the mom doesn't want to testify, doesn't want her child, the worst ones are when the mother comes out and says, my kid has suffered too much already. You know, they're waking up at night, they don't want to go to school, they don't want to be known that they're a victim of a sexual predator in school, especially the teenagers. To go around and just think of all of us, when we were growing up, who wants to be singled out that you were raped by somebody, by your dad, by your stepdad? This is everything that we have to deal with as an AG's office. So once we get that conviction, and I had to have it checked because I've got so many releases that are going out on these sexual predators, Jesse James, a non-U.S. citizen, dragged a 13-year-old into the jungle. The only difference on Jessica's Law is he didn't kill her. This is the crimes of violence, and what do you do? You know, this guy, we can deport. The moment that he's out of DOC, he's deportable. So do we give the FSM the ability to have a pedophile in their midst? Because they're not going to keep him incarcerated there. Or I had a case where there was a Palauan, that Filipina mother, but I guess the child was Palau. We had the ability to send that convict, that sexual predator convict, back to Palau. The mother says, please don't do that, because I go to Palau with my daughter. My daughter goes over there, she's going to see this guy free in Palau. This is why on certain categories of crimes, even though we have a deportation initiative, we're not releasing them. The danger of releasing them, and this is a recognition of our neighbors in this area of the world, we don't want to give them pedophiles either. You know, it's not a good neighbor thing to do, to release a pedophile into their jurisdiction where they're not going to be enforcing our statutes. So, yes, Senator, that, there's so much that it takes to convict a pedophile, let alone a sexual predator for that matter, that I just have no tolerance from an AG's office perspective, because the next time, we may not be able to get the person. And I get the conversations from Ms. Tenorio, telling me, we let this guy off three years ago, we didn't have enough evidence to get him, but we got him again. So let's get him. You know, that's the type of, we're tactically having to look at, can we get this person off the street? And letting them go, letting them out is just, you know, in our lifetimes, it's just, it's horrible to see the effects that pedophiles have among us. So.
No doubt. Yeah, no doubt. Thank you, Mr. Attorney General. Thank you so much for all the hard work you're doing, and I hope we get some extra work in your office, I mean, extra help in your office to prosecute these cases.
Thank you for your budget you're giving us. We are, we are getting them, we are bringing in prosecutors from off-island, specialized prosecutors, as we speak. So I've got a good team behind us. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Anything we can do to help, you know, this is the beginning where we're at, and I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tel O Tidaway. Senator Chris Drenas?
Jesus Mase, Madam Chair. Don't have any questions, I just wanted to thank, you know, of the list of invitees that you, you know, described in your opening, Madam Chair, I just want to especially thank the Attorney General for his very valuable testimony and information on some of the other questions that came forward. And Behavioral Health and Wellness, thank you for being here and your testimony also was very strong and very valuable, and thank you for all you do. I'm sure this bill will, you know, hopefully hastily make it through the committee process and hopefully get unanimous support. Jesus Mase, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Drenas. With that, Senator San Augustine, do you have any questions or comments on Bill 183?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. On the AG's part, I support you prosecuting, not a problem. Is there any campaign to promote to not do it, to not do the crime?
Yes.
Because, you know, you can prosecute all day, but if nobody knows that you're not supposed to do it, you're going to get prosecuted?
Excellent.
It's, you know, it's a double-edged sword.
Senator, thank you. Excellent question. Billboards. You take these pedophiles and you put them on a billboard so that everybody and their family sees that you do this crime and you're going to be embarrassed among the rest of us. The senators, when you guys pass those laws that make it known that you shall go to jail for the rest of your life, that's the deterrent. The fact that we have a winning track record with my team of prosecutors and the releases we send, you know, everybody criticizes me for sending out information and communicating, but you are the client. People of Guam are our client, and informing people is deterrence. People whispering that, hey, you better not touch that girl because you're going to literally go to jail for the rest of your life, you know, that's the type of conversations we need to have in our community. It's going to take it a while to set in, but it's the type of conversations we need to have. And again, I go back to protecting the crime victim, protecting the person that was injured and the future people, the future, especially kids in this case, that why Jessica's Law had to have a specific name, had to be passed by 46 states to get us here. But for me, it's not enough. So Senator, I am, the deterrence that we're doing, the hiring of the prosecutors, I'm looking at federal monies to bring in other prosecutors that are specifically geared towards sex crimes. I know that when I was AG the first term, there were federal program money, and that's what I have my team of PCs working on. And right now, I'm filling the prosecution function. I think right now, we have two CSC cases that are ongoing, a trial. So the media has been very good because they cover this. But senators, what shocks me is that when you look at the daily medias and you see the number of these magistrates coming in, they're just one sex crime after the next sex crime after the next sex crime, and then riddled in them are the children that are being victimized. And that's why, again, even if you don't pass the overall speedy trial right for the people of Guam, at least put a speedy trial right for the pedophiles, that we can take them from the moment of that police complaint, take them before the magistrate, take them before the grand jury, and then take them into trial within 60 days. That will do so much protection to the children, because it's the kids. And when you get a victimized child 12-years-old and it takes them four years to go to trial, when the jury sees a maturing young lady and then kind of wondering, hey, did you, you know, do something or ask for it or whatever, as opposed to that 12-year-old at the time that was prepubescent and the victimization, this is all going into the jury's minds when they're trying to determine whether or not there's guilt or innocence. So time works against the victims and in favor of the pedophiles. So, you know, that's why I kind of ask, can you please put some trigger to give the victims that ability to take their accuser into trial quickly so that we can win those cases? Thank you.
Okay. The other, the other comments I have is, when you mentioned about deporting, if a person came on an invitation to Guam, the U.S. territory, and they commit a crime, when they're done, I mean, I can understand to a certain point, the parents saying, I go back to Palau, but wait a minute, we don't need them here in Guam either. So, you know, I've got reservations on that, but we don't want them to go back to Palau. That's where you belong. We don't want you to come back here. We don't want you to go anywhere on U.S. soil anymore.
Right.
I mean, and that's my opinion, because number one, I don't know how many here, but I've got, I've got 11 grandchildren. Most of them are girls. And I take offense to, if my granddaughters were here, or my great-grand was here, daughter was here, and this was happening, and that person belongs over there, when he's done, he needs to get out of here.
Yes.
There's no business here no more. Because number one, they either come for a job, right, or for health, or for education, right?
Right.
You didn't need that because you're committing a crime. You're gone.
Yes.
I mean, I'm hoping that maybe your office can take a step forward on that and maybe, you know how they do the survey when people come to Guam? Maybe make them an official document somehow where you guys can say, wait a minute, you shouldn't be here. You need to be gone. You don't need to be convicted. You just need to be gone. You don't have a job. Your kids are not in school. You're not here for health reasons. You need to be gone before you become a pedophile.
Yes.
Before we get more victims on Guam. We don't need any more victims on Guam. We need to nip that somewhere, and if, and if they serve their time, I mean, sure, you got one lifetime, but what if, you know, he didn't get the lifetime? And he's added again?
Yes.
He should have been gone and marked at immigration that you cannot anymore come back.
Well, thank you, Senator. We're treating this as a red state, a red island. So we clearly, we're working with ICE, and I believe that's the distinction between the, what is it, the blue states or the sanctuary? I guess they use the word sanctuary, right? The sanctuary cities in the United States are deemed that when they release a criminal, they don't let ICE know at all. So ICE is not there waiting for them. On Guam, we have a whole team in our office that's working with ICE. So once they're released, they immediately get incarcerated by the federal government homeland security, ICE, and then put on a plane and deported. We're doing that. So the only question is, and by the way, we're actually implementing, we get a conviction, right? We talk to the victim's family, do you want this person immediately deported? Because we see them as the greatest reason that the people of Guam shouldn't be paying for this person to be incarcerated. When they say yes, we are open to modifying the judgment of the judge to allow the release to ICE and then immediately deportable. Because I see the victim and the victim's family as, you know, they are the ones that are harmed by this. I will follow their discretion and get that pedophile out of the DOC, because we need that bed for another pedophile or whatever, and then sent back out of the United States under an ICE detainer, which means they're not going to be allowed back in California, Hawaii, anywhere in the United States. So we are actively, that's part of our program right now, that we're doing that. And thank you, Senator. But that is our, what we're doing.
Is there any way where, if they come here from the Compaq impact or any other island, then maybe you can send them the bill?
You know, the recent COFA...
You know where I'm coming from, right?
Absolutely.
We're spending money to prosecute somebody that shouldn't have been here to begin with. And if they're getting U.S. federal money, and we're not getting it, somebody's got to pay for this bill. And I'm just, I'm just suggesting, is there any way your office can pursue that and start, and start making those islands pay for it? You know, you said, I mean, I'm not marking anybody, but if a Gamanian guy went to, on one of those islands, they'll kick them out. And I wouldn't be surprised if they'd be, they'd be asking, say, hey, is there any way you can pay for all the costs that has been incurred by our island, our government? I'm just, just something to think about.
Good ideas. This is, this is why I communicated with the governor's office in January of last year, February, with Senator Carlotta, former Senator Carlotta Leon-Grell, to discuss that. The only problem is that the federal government, COFA, and remember, non-U.S. citizens don't just include COFA, they include, you know, Palau and every other jurisdiction, including the Philippines. The, and Mayor Paco, a few months ago, talked to me about this, the administration has the ability to tag people that are here not for education, especially when they show up at public health and they turn their application for welfare in, that should be the first trigger that they are here improperly, because I think our COFA requires that they not be here just to get the welfare benefits. So if you're talking about potential universe of criminals that could be occurring because they don't have the resources, so they're going to be more likely to steal and break our laws, we do have that ability. And I did with Senator, with Mayor Paco, I am actively trying to work with him, and I believe it was Lieutenant Governor that we reached out to, to tag those people with our civil attorneys here, so that we could work something using the administration to tag those people that are not criminals yet, but that can be taken out of Guam because they shouldn't be here. And with the most recent information coming out that we're no longer going to get federal funding, it makes it even worse for us as a people that we have to now pay for the incarceration, the prosecution, and everything you're mentioning, Senator. So it comes, I welcome these comments, and I'm writing them down, on different ways to stop the criminality in general from non-U.S. citizens.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. And thank you for your budget help, by the way.
Hint, hint, because the budget's coming up soon. Thank you very much, Senators San Nicholas. I also want to provide comment, I certainly appreciate the testimony Attorney General Moylan you provided. You know, we need to, as a community, prioritize, what do we think is the most critical thing that we need to protect? What is the most important to us? I think most of us, all of us here would say, it's our children, it's those in our community that are the most vulnerable, that we need to protect. And I think our laws need to be reflective of that, hence everyone sitting up here has sponsored this bill. I'm open to the idea, and I have thought about this, I am open to the idea of lifetime imprisonment, but I did want to ask you, is there any case law in other jurisdictions that may have passed such legislation to essentially put that as the penalty, as lifetime incarceration? Has that been anything brought up or anything challenged in any other jurisdiction that may have this in place? I wanted to ask you that question.
I have not specifically researched, but I asked my team up here to write that down. We'll get back with your committee on that. And my offhand response is, yes, I think that this would pass constitutional muster. I think it's a difference between, yes, it's legal to do that, and yes, it may be precedent-senting in the United States. This is the deterrence. When Guam comes up on the professionals like Ms. Untalan here, as which states have the toughest pedophile laws, and Guam is one of the toughest, that sends a very clear message to the entire United States, and then other states will want to copy what we're doing. So there's this idea that we're, we can be a trendsetter to protect our victims out there, protect our children, as you say, and I, 100%, as I get older in life, your only legacies are going to be your children. And we need to protect them as this culture and all the other cultures among us want to do. So, yeah.
You know, we read in the paper practically almost every day of these charges brought against an individual that has committed this type of crime and that, you know, it's before the court. In terms of those cases, how many would you say, the percentage-wise, is a repeated, you know, repeated offender of this type of offense to children?
We are in the process of getting our statistics in order, but I would believe that it's got to be upward of 50%. Again, the studies, I know this, I've read the studies that show that pedophilia is a crime that you can't counsel out of a person. These people, once a pedophile, always a pedophile, you let them go, just wait for the next crime victim, even if you can detect, remember, you're talking about people that actually get caught. What about those children that don't say anything? And then come in when they're 30, 40, 50 years old, like what happened in the Catholic Church, and start talking about how they were victims? You know, this, and Boy Scouts for that matter, it's just the whole, what we have seen as a community on the epistemological data that's coming out decades after, we've gotten to the point... coming out decades after, we've gotten to the point that we have enough information to know this category of crimes, these people should not be released. You know? So, I just kind of like, the statistics, I believe, are in support of a lifetime in prison without parole, a mandatory, that the judges have no discretion on it. And I think that it's worthy of discussion among you senators to talk in real terms and to bring the crime victims forward. And this is the Crime Victims Month for us in the AG's office, so we're talking with many crime victims right now. There are so many of them. But I mean, the spectrum of what we're dealing with the AG's office isn't as easy as saying, this is a pedophile, we need to put him in jail. To actually show the jurors that you need to convict this person is so difficult. It's not easy. So, what you say, the people that you see in the newspaper, I would say at least fifty of those people would be convicted. Fifty percent. We may not have enough evidence, it may take too long, and you're going between attorney generals. You know, this person may have been charged under my year, but he's not going to be convicted for three or four years after I'm gone. Because the defense attorneys will just use the system in order to give the best vantage for their clients. So, but thank you, Senator.
On your recommendation for the speedy trial, how many of these cases would you say are not able to move forward, charged but not able to move forward simply because time has passed, that does come through your office?
Fifty percent. I can say my conversations with Christine Tenorio, she talks to me about cases where, again, the victim no longer wants to testify. We had one where we're paying for them to come back to Guam because it happened, I think it was two years ago, of that category. So, we had to get, and it was a COFA citizen that lives in the States now, so we were luckily able to get a hold of that parent, the mother, ask her if she can come back to Guam, and she agreed to, with her child. But you get all those other cases where the mother doesn't want the child to be further traumatized. The longer you get away from the event that it occurred, the more the parent becomes protective. And especially the kids. I'm telling you, the kids, when they talk with Christine Tenorio and our victims' advocates, they hate going into the court where their names are going to be released, and then they go back to school, and all the girls are whispering about them, or the boys are looking at them funny. You know, this is part of the realistic approach to what this category of crimes is in our community. And if they change their mind during trial, this is the fifty percent I'm talking about, where Christine Tenorio says, give them this deal, otherwise, we risk not getting them at all. So, we're having to do a third degree when it should have been a first degree, or an assault case, which isn't even a show up on the sex offender registry. That's why when we look at AG's prosecution, you need to, and that's why, by the way, I'm having the dismissal orders specifically identify, in the dismissal order, why the case is not prosecutable and why we're asking for dismissal without prejudice. Because the public needs to know why they see a person getting magistrate and arrested for this pedophile or sex offense, and then we're dismissing it because the mother doesn't want the child to testify, because the child doesn't want to testify. You know, that type of thing. It's a very difficult area. But I see, you take them in right after the crime occurs, they gave their police report, it's within two months, they'll testify. It increases the prosecution and the probability of taking that predator off the street. That's what I'm looking at. Thank you, Senator.
I appreciate your testimony on that. You know, I always recall this case that involved a young girl, a little girl that was at a bus stop, and she was, again, you know, abducted and molested by a pedophile that had just been released, I guess, a few months earlier from prison. I'm supportive of that. I'm certainly supportive of your speedy trial recommendation, because I think we need to prioritize, and I would consider this a priority in terms of the crimes committed in our community, particularly those against our vulnerable victims. So, I'm certainly supportive of that, Attorney General. And certainly, before this bill does go to the floor, if you're able to research and determine if there are other jurisdictions that have put this type of law in place, that would be helpful for us in our deliberations. With that, I'd like to recognize Senator Canata, who has joined us also this morning. Senator Canata, do you have any questions or comments on Bill 183?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I was tracking earlier, but I wasn't too sure if Mr. Bredalio spoke on this legislation? Can I clarify?
Good morning, Senator Canata Fred Bredalio, the current Director, Department of Corrections. You were asking if I spoke, I plan to speak in this legislation, this is the one regarding criminal sexual conduct, right, in the sentencing?
So, I certainly support the sentencing, but I fear that we're going to be putting ourselves in a potential receivership if we continue to have overcrowding over at DOC. Is that a valid concern that we should be also looking into?
This kind of legislation, of course, you know, there's always that balance. I know it's always, you know, we feel the emotional connection with the victims of criminal sexual conduct, especially children. It's very highly emotional for our island when it comes down to that. And then, of course, our mission at the Department of Corrections is, whenever the court adjudicates these cases and sentences them, then we are the ones who will receive these individuals, these offenders, when they're sentenced and adjudicated, right? And then we have to have a program in place, because eventually, if they're not serving a live sentence, they're going to face, at some time, the possibility of parole. Even though it doesn't say the possibility of parole in some of these adjudications, sometimes we find that changes down the future. Sometimes, there's some laws that are, you know, get introduced and passed, and next thing you know, the individual might be applying for parole. And this not only just, this doesn't just apply to criminal sexual conduct offenders that are currently sentenced up there, it even applies to individuals who supposedly were supposed to serve a live sentence for murder, but all of a sudden, the laws change, and now they're up trying to apply for parole too. So, there's that balance again. I'm saying, we take care of the incarceration in terms of the ones that are sentenced. The other portion of this, of course, in our prison population are the pretrial, the ones waiting for these kind of offenses. Our mission, of course, is to segregate these individuals, because it's a security situation when you have someone who's on, someone who's being held for something that violent as criminal sexual conduct against a child, within the same vicinity of a pretrial person who's just there overnight for DUI, or, you know, or crimes against property, thing of misdemeanor theft. You know, our challenge with the prison population is to segregate these individuals.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney General, I spoke to Ms. Yoli about, but I never got back from you, regarding certain individuals who have wealthy pockets. Is there any way that individuals with wealthy pockets can post, like bail, to get themselves out of this legislation? Because, you know, I'm concerned that we also see certain individuals who, again, have wealthy pockets and can afford to, you know, take those huge chunks out of their life and buy their freedom basically from the justice system. And unfortunately, the victim is the one that is the most suffering here, right? So, I certainly hear the concerns and the issue that we're trying to address today. But I wanted to clarify whether or not an individual can basically buy their freedom back out because they can afford to.
Very good question, Senator Canata. You know, I was thinking about this, because ever since I've gotten in, we've got the catch, release, reoffend problem. It's occurring at the magistrate, judges level. And Guam truly is a cashless bail jurisdiction. Everything that you're hearing in New York, that police officer's funeral that was just over the weekend and stuff like that, is occurring on Guam because we have this personal recognizance bond option. Whether you're rich or you're poor, the judges have this discretion to basically say, sign this piece of paper, and you're out of here, and if you get violated, which many are getting violated, you owe twenty thousand, five thousand, and la di da. The problem is, nobody ever collects the money. We don't have the attorneys to go chase them down under some sort of a collections action, even if the judge says, you violated, therefore, you're going to be paying five thousand dollars, let alone from an indigent, right? We don't have the resources to be running a small claims court, to go nickel and dime us until at infinitum, paying five bucks a month because they have no money. So, you need to put cash bail in the statute. This is part of the bigger problem. If you really want to fix the system, stop allowing the judges to release these people on personal recognizance. When you put up money, you need to ask your family, you need to dig deep in your pocket, and that is a performance. You have a stake in this race to make sure you comply with the judges' orders. With the pedophile question, I think our judges are, they know enough that just because you have money, I don't see that, that they're letting you off easier or not easy. I see certain judges that are just soft on criminals, wanting to give them that second chance. And it's not an issue about innocence until proven guilty. When you see the meth addicts, or you see the prior history of criminality, which we're spending our resources to put it in paper, go to our website, you see all these people, those are the guys that are committing all the crimes. The catch and release is focused upon criminal records, histories, career criminals, that just go out there and do it again, let alone don't follow the judges' orders, and the meth addicts. You can't trust these guys because they're just going to do it again. So, in question, no, I don't think that money is really a difference right now. But also, Senators, when a pedophile is brought in before a judge and is now known that they're on the hot seat, they have their sensibilities. They know that if they do this again, they're not ever getting out, period. Because the judge, I think the judges, if they heard anything where that sexual predator was doing anything wrong, they're going to bring them back in, and they're not getting out. I think that's what I've seen in my experience. But again, the meth addicts, no. They don't, they're hallucinating, they don't understand everything. That's why you don't release them on, especially the PCSs that we're seeing every day with the car pullovers. So, it's just a bigger question. Put up a bail, I think, an actual cash bail, or was it ankle bracelet? Something that ensures that the community is safe. And that's in our code already, that judges can set bail according to safety to the community. That's why I say, the history, prior criminal history, you're at a higher level of violating again. So, but yeah, I, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Attorney General. Also, I wanted to clarify, you did bring up situations where, unfortunately, children or the legitimate parent, you know, puts some stepparent in a situation in unfortunate circumstances, right? So, is there any discipline for that? I mean, you know, that's someone's life. I only say this because I know someone who unfortunately had to relocate when they really loved their job here because of the stepchild, you know, making those...
False allegations.
False allegations. And from making twenty-nine dollars in an hour to going back down to the bottom of the pit, eleven dollars, because the Google search every time he applies for something just pulls up that statement. And although he was expunged and the situation is no longer on the record...
The trauma of it.
It's the, you know, the possibility of any of the clients being in that position with him. So, you know, I was wondering if there's any justice for the individual who has been wrongfully accused and...
I have actually represented people in that situation where an innocent stepfather was accused of touching a minor, having sex with the minor, when in fact, the minor was lying. This is part of the vetting process that goes on in the AG's office, especially when they have juvenile cases, family court cases, that the juvenile bad grades, known to lie, you know, it's basically in and out of JD cases in family court. We usually look at that for the credibility of the minor. So, there's a vetting that goes on within the AG's office itself. I would be worried about putting any punishment on a minor victim, because that would cause the chilling effect, that would be more damaging than, unfortunately, the defendant having to be dragged through the process of front page of the newspapers and stuff like that. It's usually, you know, and by the way, the police department is very good. Because almost on every other day, the police department is calling me up, saying that we've got this person, that's saying that the dad or the stepdad touched them. And it's usually a lot of questions, what's the priors of the accused and everything. So, I think the system right now is doing as much vetting as it can, and I probably would not want the minor to be in any way punished or reported or anything like that. Because even the kids are going to go, hey, you do this, they're going to drag you into family court and punish you for lying. Yeah. Thank you, though, Senator.
Thank you, guys, again, for your hard work and your continued collaboration, especially with DOC. I know you guys are still facing some challenges up there. I hope those things can get resolved soon. Thank you, Madam Chair. And that's nothing further.
Thank you very much, Senator Canata. Are there any other questions or comments from the panel? If not, I'd like to ask the sponsor, Senator Chris Barnett, to provide his closing or questions with regards to Bill 183.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to close, and I definitely thank the AG and his team for their testimony. There's a lot of insightful things that you mentioned, AG, that, you know, I'm totally committed to researching the feasibility and seeing if we'll be able to get the support to move some of these ideas that you put forth here today. But one thing I do know is that we have the support to move this bill as it stands today. So, I'm very grateful for that. Also, Ms. Untalan, thank you very much for your testimony and support of the measure. I think we're all well aware of the horrific and depraved situation with the assaults that go on against our young people. But again, to see it in black and white with the numbers, I think is, like, it's horrifying. Yeah, and I think it justifies the bill. And just in closing, I just wanted to say, because I've seen this argument posed before, and it's no disrespect to you, Director Bredalio, and obviously, as the Chair of Oversight, the Department of Corrections, I'm just not comfortable with this idea that we can't put anyone in jail and punish them for crimes against our community because we don't have room. That's a failure in our government's part, and I'll take my responsibility as the Chair of DOC. But that doesn't fly out there with the public. We have an obligation to protect our people, protect our children, and I'm not comfortable with the idea that we shouldn't lock up child rapists and pedophiles because we don't have the room. And I would just, I mean, we've got a roundtable coming up, and we're looking at the solutions. But again, these judges, a lot of times, I feel like they're abusing the discretion. I mean, especially with this pretrial release, I feel like they're applying the most liberal interpretation of the ABA. I think many of these people who are being released, you know, it's very, it could be justified that they could be held as a risk and as a danger to the community. I mean, I read a case where the guy was out on three different violent crimes, and we read about it just about every single day. So, I think it's going to get worse if we're doing it right before it gets better. And again, I would just, it just doesn't sit well with me that we're going to tell our people that, oh, we don't want to lock up the drug dealers, we don't want to lock up the pedophiles, we don't want to lock up the child rapists, because we just don't have the room for it. And, you know, I'm not saying that's your fault, obviously, right? I mean, this is something that we all have a hand in moving forward. But again, I'm just not comfortable with that, and I've seen that kind of narrative, you know, in response to both my Bill 183 and Bill 239, which I think you actually showed up to testify for, right? So, just apply my comments there to your testimony on that bill. See you just modestly, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnett, for your closing comments. And with that, we have no further comments from the panel. We will move on to the next bill on the agenda. And that's Bill 239, introduced by Senator Chris Barnett, Jesse Anderson Luhon, Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores Perez, Dwayne S. Nicholas, Telo Titegui. An act to have been Section 67.401.4A and B of Section 80.39.2E of Title IX Guam Code annotated, relative to sentencing and fine enhancements based on the quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl involved in the trafficking or manufacturing of these drugs, and to remove first-time offenders. Considerations of the Justice Safety Valve Act for illicit drug trafficking and manufacturing Before we hear from those that have signed up to testify, we'd like to invite the prime sponsor again, Senator Chris Barnett, to provide his comments on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to open on the bill, and of course, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support in its introduction. Now, what the bill does, Bill 239 creates more severe incarceration sentences for drug traffickers who are found in possession of large quantities of crystal methamphetamine or fentanyl. The bill creates stronger sentences for drug traffickers found in possession of those larger quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl. Currently, crystal methamphetamine, it's no news to us here in Guam, is the most common dangerous drug abused here, while fentanyl is the most dangerous drug abuse throughout the United States. But I will say for the record that we have heard of fentanyl use on Guam, and in fact, Director Bredalio in the Department of Corrections says they've discovered people that are being held there who have been under the influence of fentanyl. Guam law already makes possession of methamphetamine a third-degree felony, which carries a sentence of one to five years. Existing law already makes possession of methamphetamine with intent to deliver a first-degree felony, which carries a sentence of five to twenty years. This bill will... This bill will create sentences of incarceration beyond the penalties prescribed for first-degree felonies. Crimes such as criminal homicide and criminal sexual conduct currently carry sentencing ranges outside the standard sentencing guidelines. And the bill also adopts federal minimum sentencing requirements for large quantities, again, of crystal methamphetamine and fentanyl. And I'm very grateful for the support of my colleagues. I think it's interesting to note that the local law, the penalties are less strict than the federal ones we see on the books. And I've noticed that there's been several cases where the feder, the feds have decided not to prosecute local, there's a case off the top of my head where an individual allegedly brought in five pounds of crystal methamphetamine, and the feds have not taken up that case. And so, I feel like if, if we're seeing that as often as we are, then we better make sure we have strong penalties on our books. And again, I'm not targeting addicts with this bill. My philosophy is that we need to treat the addicts when they want the treatment. If you talk to people in, who work in treatment and rehabilitation, they're going to tell you the, the facts, that, you know, people just can't get off meth. I mean, we, we were in this public hearing room last week, and we heard about the foster care crisis, the crisis with CPS, and the root cause of this is people who are abusing meth. And so, while I have my feelings about people continuing to abuse meth and the punishment they deserve, and the psychosis that is involved with long-term meth abuse, I know that's, that's something that the AG has talked about. And I think that's why it's such a difficult problem that we're facing. With that being said, I believe the people who have made a decision to poison our paradise by peddling large quantities of crystal methamphetamine or fentanyl deserve the strictest punishment under our local law. And that's a hill I'm very prepared to stand on and fight for. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opening. Again, I'm encouraged and eager to hear the testimony from the people who came to provide it. See you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnett. For the record, the committee requested feedback and testimony on Bill 239 from the following: the Office of the Attorney General of Guam, the Judiciary of Guam, the Probation Office, the Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense, Department of Corrections, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Police Department Sexual Assault Response Team, and the Guam Parole Board. As far as legal review was requested from the Legal Bureau on March 26, 2024, and the response from the Legal Bureau was received on March 28, 2024, stating that the bill remains subject to review. With regards to the summary on Bill 239, it amends Section 67.401.4A and B and Section 80.39.2E relative to sentencing and fine enhancements based on the quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl involved in the trafficking or manufacturing of these drugs, and to remove first-time offenders, consideration of the Justice Safety Valve, Valve Act for illicit drug trafficking and manufacturing crimes. With regards to fiscal note, fiscal impact, a fiscal note was requested and sent on February 9, 2024, and BBMR responded on February 14, 2024, stating that according to the comments received from the Office of the Attorney General, it does not ascertain any immediate fiscal impact, and that the proposed bill would help keep our community safe at any cost associated with implementing this would be absorbed by the agencies affected, and the benefit would outweigh the cost of implementation. The Bureau further notes that there will be a potential impact to the Department of Corrections relative to incarceration-specific costs, and such costs for meals, health care, clothing, rehabilitative services, and other associated costs and services while in prison for a longer period of time. If found guilty for an offense pursuant to this act, the offender shall be sentenced to imprisonment for not less than 25 years nor more than 35 years, and may in addition be fined not more than $5 million to $25 million if the violator is a business. For larger quantities of drugs, the offender shall be sentenced to imprisonment for not less than 40 years up to life imprisonment without the possibility of parole, and may in addition be fined not more than $20 million to $75 million if the violator or is a business. The fine imposed in this bill will generate significant revenues to the Drug Treatment and Enforcement Fund administered by Probation Department of the Superior Court, and shall be used only for drug abuse, education prevention, and treatment services. The committee will now receive testimony on the bill, and I will begin. I know there's a listing here from the Office of the Attorney General. I read the names of those that signed up. We have Louis Harley, Yolanda Elliott, Rea King, of course, our Attorney General Douglas Moylan. We also have testimony from Dave Lomboski, who has asked for his testimony to be risen, even though he's absent. And I assume, Director Bredalio, you have provided written testimony, you would also like to provide testimony on this bill. With that, again, Attorney General, we'll turn it over to you and your team to provide testimony on Bill 239.
Thank you, Senator Brown. We've submitted written testimony. These comments come from our drug prosecutor, Christine Borha. And I apologize to our Chief Justice, or I'm sorry, our chief prosecutor wasn't present here today, as well as some other lead teams in the prosecution, but they've been dealing with the number of cases that are going on today. So, I've received their input on it. I provided that short-written testimony, but I'd like to, we need to put a perspective on what the drug problem is on Guam. I believe that the drug problem is an economic one, the supply and demand. We know that this bill attacks the supply. You know, everybody wants to put these, everybody wants to punish and put the drug suppliers in jail. The only problem is the actual implementation through our law enforcement community, doing their detective work in order to find out who are the drug suppliers and drug dealers. What we normally see in our office are the ones that are caught, like in their car, for example, within the past 30 days. They find the larger quantity of meth, they find a scale, and they find baggies. So, it's circumstantial evidence that this person must be a distributor. But they aren't the distributor that's bringing it in probably through the Port Authority of Guam, or dumping it on the side of the reefs, or even potentially manufacturing it on Guam. The, the gauge that we use in the AG's office, at some point, we have to look at the, the street price of a gram of meth and find out if it's going up or it's going down. If it's going down, we know that either the supply is dropped, or the demand is dropping, or the supply is increasing. Either way, it's a, it's a, a bad thing. In addition to what this bill does, which I, I believe is a good thing, we have to recognize that the better court to deal with the drug dealers is federal court, in my opinion. The federal court is able to go to Hawaii, go to their contacts in, outside of the borders of Guam, Asia, wherever it's coming in from, Saipan, and actually use their, the purview of the federal government to acquire the evidence, and then to prosecute them with the strict laws that already exist in the federal court system. For those cases that we actually, the feds don't want to handle, you know, obviously, these laws are important. I, I support its passage, Senator Barnett. But I think that one of the conversations that has to be done is hammer the meth addicts to the point that we take them off the street, we stop the flow into the Department of Corrections, and we basically create a lower demand for it, which is going to drive the price up. Because with less quant, less demand, you know, the, the basic economic curve, right now, it's triage that's going on out there. We're just taking these people in and then unfortunately, releasing them at the magistrates, or releasing them eventually at the end of the equation. Our office right now, and I will release it to the senators when I get to the bottom of it, there are mandatory minimums for possession. Why are the courts releasing them on suspended sentences? You can't suspend a sentence for a DUI. You can't suspend, there's other categories of crimes you can't suspend a sentence for. I, and this is a question I posed to my prosecutor, like, within the past four weeks. Why are my seeing the courts releasing them when I've looked at the code and it says mandatory minimum? That's what the code is saying. But there's a section in it that the courts have construed to allow the release of meth addicts. When you find a person in possession, it's usually because they're a meth addict, and they just came from robbing somebody, or just about ready to go rob somebody, so that they can acquire the resources, the money, to get their next fix. That's the cycle that we, we're used to out there. So, you know, this is going to be a, a document that's going to be coming from our office to see whether or not there's a bill change that's necessary in our statute to address where the courts are allowing them off. And I'm not talking about the ADC. ADC is a separate program, it has its own parameters for admission. But senators, our, our office clearly is, we need to keep the meth addicts incarcerated and get them treatment, if that be the will of the legislature or the governor. But it goes back to that same question, to protect the community out there. So, to the extent that this bill is, is positive, it is a positive bill, we do need to, I, I believe we do need to implement it and pass it. But I think we also should hit the demand side, and we should hit it with the bail reform type of statute, as well as, you know, tag it into DOC treatment. And I, I will say again, that the opioid council last year authorized funds, you know, I'm supposedly the, the person that puts it all together for the, the monies, all these millions of dollars we had. And we actually funded the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness's fund request for non-Arsat at the prison. So, you know, that, that's underway right now. But to give you an example, Department of Corrections, they had the big bust in the past 30 days, right? Something happened at one of the buses at Department of Corrections, and maybe the, the chief, the director here can explain more thoroughly what was going on over there without jeopardizing the investigation. But the feds have already reached out to us to take the case. So, you know, it's something that I usually do. When the feds want a case, by all means, take it. There's no pride when it comes to prosecution. If we can nail these guys and put them away in some federal prison that, that they're going to pay for, not we taxpayers, and put them up for a long time, that is where we should be. But we should also have these available as well. So, thank you, senators, for this opportunity to comment on it.
Thank you very much, Attorney General Moylan. With that, Director Bredalio, you would like to provide testimony on Bill 239.
Good morning, Senator Joanne Brown. Good morning, Senator Barnett, Senator Luhon, Senator Canata, Senator Juanius, Senator Telo Tidigui, Fred Bredalio Jr., Director of Department of Corrections. I've submitted a written testimony in regards to this Bill 239-37. And I just want to just say that a lot of my testimony, I hit on the respect of the judiciary and their decision-making. I'll give a little bit of background where that came from. You know, when I was a student taking criminal law, my instructor was Judge Abati, and everyone knows the reputation of Judge Abati. And he asked me this question, he said, Fred Bredalio, I know your dad's a lawyer, but I want to ask you something. Sentencing guidelines, mandatory sentencing guidelines, would you take my judicial discretion away from me? You know, and if a law came out that I was restricted to just the sentencing guidelines, mandatory? And I said, well, before you answer that, he said, do I, do you want me to take discretion away from you for every single car you pull over in a traffic stop? I mean, do you give a traffic ticket to everyone you pull over? Do you sometimes, case by case, you give a warning, you know, depending on what the case is? And then I said, well, you know, Your Honor, I said, I, I guess it is, it is significant on the discretionary power you have as a judge to look at each and every single case. And he said, every case is different, every circumstance is different. And then I was trying to connect that to the situation here, you know, with the, the situation of drug trafficking. Because, you know, as a former police officer, before I was chief of police, I actually worked back in 2001, 2000, I believe, possibly the same time, General Moylan, you know, that I was in the Violent Street Crimes Task Force. And we did a lot of street-level drug interdiction at the time, when we worked with the feds. And we actually be involved in organized drug trafficking cases where the feds adopted, because they're always interested, as General Moylan pointed out earlier, in a big bust that we had recently, weeks ago, I don't want to get into detail on that, because the federals are adopting that, and it could lead to a higher, you know, prosecution of some individuals, you know. We have our challenges at Department of Corrections when it comes down who we have. But the thing about it is, when I was initially looking at the legislation, Senator Barnett, I looked at, would Senator Barnett be looking at the retail, or the wholesale, or the corporate sales? Because, you know, there are different levels of these people who traffic drugs. There's a guy who will sell 50 plate because he's addicted and he's trying to make ends meet, and he's really low level, he's not the mania hawk that we're really, that the feds are really looking for. We're always looking for, you know, the big.
Director Bredalio, it's 49 grams and up, so, I don't know, 49 grams, if you're going around 49 grams, you're not the mania hawk, you're the mamulan.
That's right. You know, I, I, I mean, even, even at that level of the grams, I know it was mentioned there, you know, there are some major players in our region, you know, transnational crime organizations, Asian crime organizations, you know, drug traffickers leading to Yakuza and, and the Northern Marianas to Guam. And we, we've seen these high-level rollers, you know, and, but the thing about it, again, as, as I said, is that there are strategies that the feds have adopted that even state and locals are doing. It's not mentioned here, and I think probably, General Moylan probably would agree to this, is because it's a profitable thing, a lot of local, state, state and local jurisdictions have looked at civil asset forfeiture or asset forfeiture proceedings of, of taking those profits away from the, from the drug trafficker. And then that would be allocated to the individuals who are in the fight against these war on drugs, the drug treatment people, education, you know, at the school levels, and then also our enforcement, you know, public safety agencies. So, I would just say, just to consider that, and that's actually probably why I said that, you know, Department of Corrections impacted on whatever funding, because if there's any sort of like judicial discretion, one of them, probably working with the Office of Attorney General, is to look at where that drug traffickers' assets, when they're seized, how would they be allocated? And there's those three different areas, drug treatment, drug, anti-drug education for our youth and young adults, and then of course, enforcement. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Director Bredalio, for providing your testimony. The committee also did receive testimony from Dave Lomboski, and he did ask, as a courtesy, if his testimony could be read into the record. I'd like to ask if Senator Tidigui could oblige us by providing his written testimony. Thank you, Senator Tidigui.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I think many people who, who are, still take the initiative, they're unable to make it, but they find their way to voice their concerns, their opinions, and definitely their position on legislation. So, it is very important. I'll try to make this as fast as I can in reading, but still being able to understand what he's trying to say and avail to. And he begins of David Lomboski. He says, "Thank you, senators, for allowing me to provide testimony on Bill 239-37, which I do not support. I'm not sure if this bill is, is about deterrence of drug trafficking, or strict punishment, or mitigation of the drug problem on Guam, so my, so my testimony reflects all these areas. Let me ask a rhetorical question, please. Do any one of you or anyone in this room know of someone who went to prison, when, then while there turned their life around and became a contributing member of society upon release? Of course you do, we all do. I ask that question with Bill 239. That possibility of reform is taken away from people on Guam who want to or do reform in prison. Bill 239 provides for long jail terms, but with no rehabilitation, no work release, no room for parole, no judicial discretion, et cetera, and ultimately provides no incentives for people to change, nor does Bill 239 do anything to resolve Guam's drug problems. Does the government or taxpayer have any additional cool million plus-plus to throw away per prisoner beyond what we spend now incarcerating these people with absolutely no expected change in Guam's drug crisis? Just to be clear, drug traffickers belong in jail, and those who, whose drugs result in deaths or injury to others should be kept in jail as long as possible, without a doubt the judicial discretion should be involved. In the bigger picture, though, in fact, there is absolutely no collaborating research at the state or federal level to support the proposed Bill 239. Longer jail terms and harsher rules of confinement will deter or impact drug use of community safety on Guam. Even capital punishment around the world for traffickers had negotiable impact on the sales of drug. Look at research from the feds on a state level. Bill 239 fails to, fail short of the intended goal if the goal is deterrence or drug abuse mitigation. For places with autocratic governments. For places with autocratic governments, this law would fit in quite nicely, such as China. The current drug trafficker's sentence on Guam is around six to 10 years, depending on the circumstances, with the courts having discretion over the sentencing. Bill 329 removes the court's discretion. It sets up a mandatory sentencing term based on the quantities of meth, fentanyl, that you are caught with, with a 20 to 40 years of prison, life in prison for repeated offenders. There is no chance of parole, with doubling or quadrupling the current sentences. The courts will not be able to take exceptional circumstances into consideration. Where the heck are we and what is the goal of this bill based on research of incarceration versus rehabilitation? I want to repeat, to be clear, drug traffickers do belong in jail, and I am not advocating letting these people off, but this bill is not the way to go. National research overall indicates that such laws with harsh prison terms rarely get the so-called kingpins, and those who are mostly disadvantaged or minorities get caught up in these mandatory sentencing nets. Bill 239 will incentivize the same of minors and others who are financially desperate or are desperate addicts to do the dirty work to protect the connected traffickers with absolutely no impact on the drug trade. Remove one lower-level person, or even a kingpin, another steps in. Longer jail terms, as noted, do not deter drug sales or use. It never has, it never will. Internationally, it is noted that not even capital punishment deters drug trafficking, according to the International Review of Penal Law. Bill 239-37 does not deal with the significant issues of drug abuse mitigation on Guam. Instead, significantly increases our tax obligations while keeping the island in the continued cloud of drug abuse and related violence. Where are the drug rehabilitation programs? Where are the alternative sentencing programs? Where are the alternative living residential programs? They are all very limited on Guam, all of which are proven successful in dealing with the significant issue of drug abuse, as compared to prolonged jail time with no research-proven benefits and added huge costs to the taxpayers, not to mention the already overcrowding The alternatives to longer jail terms are mentioned are only a fraction of the cost of incarceration and are successful in dealing with the drug epidemic versus incarceration. This would apply to addicts as well as traffickers. According to the American Psychological Association, 87.5% of people selling drugs are also users, with 43% meeting the criteria of a substance abuse disorder. These people need treatment. The current cost officially to house each prisoner at DOC has not been updated in over 11 years on Guam. But using cost-of-living inflation progressions, it's estimated that it currently costs approximately $47,647 conservatively per year, per prisoner, taking into consideration that 11 years ago, the cost was officially pegged at 97.71 daily. The feds in 2022 estimated their per-prisoner costs were about $42,672. With the cost-of-living differences, Guam was in line with the feds. Also, in 2021, it was estimated that DOC's Lieutenant Anton Ugin, that the per-prisoner cost per day is $115, or almost $42,000 per year, nearly the same as the feds then. But again, with inflation, that would be approximately $49,464 today. In any cost, my point is that Bill 239, which once again is not valid with any research to achieve its intended purpose beyond aristocratic punishment, autocratic punishment, will be adding incredibly up to 34 years to current sentencing, not to mention the life sentences the bill outlines. So, if we only use 24 years and an added sentence per Bill 239, as an example, based on my estimated per-year per-prison cost, $47,647, the cash-strapped Guam taxpayer will be dishing out $1.143,528 per inmate. This is over $1 million per prisoner due to Bill 239, which will, again, not decrease drug use or sales on Guam. We are talking big bucks with no drug mitigation return. I'm not even discussing Bill 2340, 40-year sentence, or the life-in-prison scenario. You can play with the numbers or challenge them, as you see fit, but the taxpayers do not need this burden, especially with their current economic challenges. They need a proven, successful plan for drug abuse mitigation on Guam, which Bill 239 does not provide for. In contrast to this, at a fraction of the cost for proven effective treatment programs, for the National Institute on Drug Abuse, nationally, it is stated, if 10% to 15% of those convicted of drug charges were sent to treatment programs, it would save society $48 billion per year. According to the Council of State Government Justice Center, research consistently shows that the community-based treatment can reduce drug use. Remember, drug use and trafficking are tied together. Using Kansas as an example, as they state, a prison sentence in 2019 cost $26,188, but an existing treatment program only costs $3,143, a fraction of the cost. Using this specific Kansas figures, treatment, which has proven history of success, costs only about 12% of what a prison would cost. These figures are petty, constant with comparing other studies and locations. Treatment versus incarceration, with cost ratios sometimes in place, rising 25% of prison costs, still a huge savings. The Kansas figures for Guam estimated costs under Bill 239, if adding 24 years to a prison term, would be $1.1 million plus total each prisoner on top of current sentencing. But if using an alternative established treatment program with a proven success, the cost as a rough estimate would be $137,230, a considerable savings. The yearly DOC estimated per-prison cost of $47,647 would be roughly estimated to be only $5,718 per year, if eligible prisoners were instead put in treatment programs, saving taxpayers much with a higher success rate than the proposed Bill 239 prison terms. I'm mindful that this approach of treatment versus prison will not allow, will not apply to all prisoners, nor will it be successful with all. But Bill 23, there are no alternatives in place for these prisoners, except long prison terms, many of whom are disadvantaged and have families at home. Again, I'm not suggesting letting them off. I'm not suggesting applying practical alternatives with judicial discretion to incarceration rather than harsh prison terms behind bars, remembering, again, people we know that have significantly turned their lives around while in prison and are productive members of society now. Bill 239, they may still be in jail. This discussion does not even take into consideration the present gross overcrowding at DOC and the cost to build a new prison, which will be exacerbated by Bill 239. It does not make sense to initiate such expensive legislation without fully justifying how it will succeed to fix Guam's drug problems or be paid for. Bill 239 ignores the success of alternative incarceration programs at the financial hardship and safety of Guam taxpayers who are already suffering, while not mitigating drug abuse on island. Bill 239 does not even allow for prisoners to have work release for a decade or so, just the opposite of what the feds and research states are important as one part of rehabilitation. The Federal Bureau of Prisons has stated that will design and implement prison addiction and rehabilitation programs have had excellent results in reducing criminal behavior, reducing recidivism, improving employment opportunities, et cetera. Bill 239 negates all this research. Bill 239 does not allow for redemption while in jail, as we have seen often by prisoners. It is virtually a life sentence for many based on their age. No matter how much one turns their life around while in jail, sorry, you are not leaving. In summary, I agree that drug traffickers should be in jail, but Bill 239 will not impact the drug problem on Guam. It will be an enormous financial burden on the government and taxpayers, while the current prison cannot manage its present population or increase in inmates. The bill does not have grounding in research at any level for success. Use the extra estimated million-plus per prisoner that Bill 239 will cost, instead, to create community, alternative sentencing, and treatment programs instead of prolonged incarceration. These programs are well-documented at impacting drug abuse at a fraction of the cost without autocratic mandatory mandates. Please stop throwing taxpayer monies into the wind, but not dealing with the drug crisis on Guam. Thank you, David Lombowski, ED, Tim Wining.
Thank you very much, Senator Taitegui. I know that was quite a long testimony, but I appreciate your assistance in reading his testimony to the record. With that, Senator Jesse Lujan, do you have any questions or comments on Bill 239?
Yeah, just more of a comment. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, our communities, again, have, as with the previous bill, have had enough, not just with pedophiles, but also with drug addicts. And as co-author of this bill, yeah, it's just, the community's fed up, and we have to do something in regards to not just drug traffickers, but also the users. Yes, we are, could enhance, of course, the treatment side of the House, but as the Attorney General said, his job is not to rehabilitate, but to put people in jail. And it's our job here, actually, to find the monies for all the other programs, to be able to, again, in incarceration and then, you know, coming out to the community. But let me ask you this, because you're a former COPA Director Bredalio. You know, I, almost on a daily basis, I talk to men and women who are on the force. And I know this bill talks about, of course, methamphetamine and fentanyl. You know, I grew up in the late 60s and 70s, and, yeah, you know, we had, of course, heroin, marijuana, acid, all that. And the men and women nowadays, you know, and they're busting of people on methamphetamine, and I see this. I mean, this is the first time I've seen actually people coming up to your cars, you know, and, I mean, and they're just like insane. Just like the other day, Dr. Landstrom, whose house was invaded, and someone's trying to break down his wall looking for dead bodies. Is it still methamphetamine and fentanyl? Or, I mean, because what they're saying is, is whatever drug they're on is very different from, I guess, the first-generation methamphetamine, you know? Yes.
My impression, and I do that little bit of retrospective analysis, whether it was crystal meth, or, like you mentioned, the heroin of the 70s, from what I understand, Senator. The difference is, the cost is so low, so they've made it more efficient to manufacture, and the addiction potential is much higher. So, you've got almost the perfect sales drug that will not only sell, sell to a large mass of people, and then immediately get an addiction at a very quick turnaround. So, I think that's, and once it grabs you and it holds you, it's not like alcohol, where people kind of go in and out of alcoholism all through their life, and it's not as damaging in terms of hurting other people, you know, relatively speaking. So, it's because of all those factors and the type of chemical that it makes the brain addicted to it. I was hearing it takes 90 days to six months to get off of it, and then we're dealing with just life's problems. And I think that is an important aspect of it, that when people are in their ups and lows of their life, they're prone to addiction. They're prone to drinking. We all know the cycle, getting off the wagon, getting back on the wagon. It's not necessarily the drug itself, but it's the drug that grabs you and doesn't let you go. And I think, Senator, that's the difference between maybe what you've experienced, what I've seen, and where we are now as a community. That's why I just focus upon, take them off the street to protect us. I don't think anybody can argue with that, that when you put somebody at Director Bredalio's prison, they're not jumping his fence very often, if at all, and we're safer at night. So, you know, it's that triage-type mentality that we're being forced to make, to lose the compassion and be compassionate to the crime victim, as opposed to the person who voluntarily chose to take a drug that everybody knows is going to ruin your life and destroy you. It will kill you. You know, I've had clients that actually put the gun to their head and just killed themselves. Case over, case dismissed, you know, new appointment, when I was in the private practice. It's sad, and that's what I would tell my clients when I would see them. This is going to kill you. Who cares if I'm representing you right now? You got to look at who you're going to leave behind, your daughter, your son, that you're never going to see again, because you've taken it. But that's the compassion side that our community is fighting with every day. I'm fighting against people that say that the AG is not compassionate, with people that are saying, I'm a crime victim, what are you going to do for me? This guy's out again, with the police officers that can get demoralized because the guy that they arrested last night is back on the street again. So, you know, it's difficult, Senator. But I think that if everybody does their jobs, we're going to be in a better place than we are right now.
Well, not only, again, in what the danger of the community from these drug addicts as well, is that, I think the medical examiner had come out, and also he said, is that a large amount of our deaths are attributed to methamphetamine overdose? And I didn't know that. I mean, it's not stated. And you always wonder when you look, you know, when you look at the obituary, and you see younger folks there, you know, you say, how did they die?
Dr. Nines' report, Senator, as you're pointing out, he issued a most recent report that is exactly what he told me when I came in. He was going to start to test the bodies for meth. And then he saw some fentanyl, too, in the chemical, you know, his tests that he's doing. His reports are telling us how our community is deteriorating, in addition to what we're seeing in the newspaper.
Unfortunately, we're going to be losing him.
I know. And we're working on that right now. And he's willing to work with us, by the way. So, we'll transition to another medical examiner.
That's all I have right now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Lujan. With that, Senator Cristianios.
Jesus Massey, Madam Chair, and much like my good colleague Senator Lujan, more of a comment and maybe a follow-up from the Attorney General. You know, nationally, and I don't know maybe if some of your, you know, some of your colleagues may have attended conferences recently in terms of the opioid epidemic nationally, but what's being reported in the larger cities now, in particular places like San Francisco, Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland, and, you know, the list goes on, in terms of the bigger cities, is, I wanted to, you know, expand on your point, Mr. Attorney General, is that actually supply is causing demand, because there's so much of it, and it's so inexpensive. There was a national program that, and you might want to look this up in terms of the database, there was a national report that pills laced with fentanyl are as low-priced as 25 cents in some cities. And so, the reality of that much product being on the streets and the accessibility is something that is really causing and really exacerbating the epidemic. And so, I think the reason why we're contemplating issues such as this is because of the fact that, you know, these dealers got to get taken out. The chain has got to be disrupted, to the point to where, you know, as you were saying earlier, the supply is just so plentiful that it's creating addicts. And that's another thing that we're going to talk about, you know, eventually in the coming weeks, is that we need way more enforcement as well, because a lot of people, and I've talked to, you know, addicts that have come to my office to talk about bills I've introduced and the like, and I've spoken to them, and now... and the like, and I've spoken to them, and, and now they really understand where I'm driving at, that you got to get these people contacted as fast as possible, because a lot of people go into recovery, they don't mind letting their dad down, or their mom down, or their aunt down for some reason, you know, maybe that's not built into them in terms of that respect level anymore. But the fact is, the first time they hit law enforcement and the courts, it's, it's a whole new ballgame.
Yes.
And so the bottom line is, is I think that this is why, you know, we, we watch this bill as it goes through, but man, I tell you, if we can get the word out on the street, the big guy's got to go down.
Yes.
You know, and, and, and this supply has got to be choked off, because it, like you said, Mr. AG Moyle, and this is killing our people. And so I, I'm looking at it at this point in time, obviously, there's a debate here in testimony, but the reality is, is it's got to be all hands on deck, and there's got to be every tool in the toolbox available, so that's why I appreciate, you know, your presentation.
Fight them at every level that you can fight them at. You know, it's, it's a constant battle, Senator, and thank you. I think you're, you're seeing what it takes to, to fight the epidemic that Guam is experiencing right now. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, one thing that, we can never give our community too much information, right? So the bottom line is, too, is with this supply and what we know, you know, anytime we can make families more aware of what these, what this looks like, you know, how, how it presents within, you know, try to get people, because you're exactly right, I, I, you know, I've dealt with a number of issues, you know, of, over the years, of, of those that I love that have become addicted, and it's true, it's, it's a long journey back.
Yeah.
And the longer they're on it, the harder it is, you know, to deal with. So if you can, if you can get there in the early stages, or keep it off the streets to begin with, we're in much better shape. So I'm inclined to continue to move forward and listen to the debate, but I think we, at this point in time, we kind of arm ourselves, you know, any, any less and, and more is, is going to be better. Fred, you know, I, I, I sympathize with your, 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 the issues that exist. It's like your predecessor, when he came down here, he said about the Attorney General, he said, he kept his promise, because, you know, they were averaging in the 600 and 650s, and I know you're touching the high 800s right now. So, you know, he's doing his job. But I know that you, you also, I want to take this time to highlight once again, you and your organization has one of the premier, it's not politically fun and sexy to talk about prison, building a prison, but you have got everything you need right now. I hope you're going to be going to market soon, because your plan is ready to go, it's scaled, and it's, it's, it's really some, a piece of work that you guys done. So, you know, we'll, we'll answer that question about where we're going to put them, if we have to, in, in, in my humble opinion. Jesus Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Duenas. With that, Senator Sennickless, do you have comments on this bill or questions?
No, Madam Chair, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Sennickless. Senator Tyde Gray, do you have any questions or comments on Bill 239?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a co-sponsor, of course, I support the legislation, but I do understand the concerns of Mr. Lomboski, you know, about more treatment programs put together. I know, Fred, you're a real advocate for that perspective, you know, doing much we can for those who are incarcerated to become better citizens when they come out and be rehabilitated. So I, I look forward to other legislation that's going to encourage that and support that type of, you know, assistance that needed for those who are addicts. You know, everyone has been touched, family members, I'm no different. I had a family member who was into drugs, and we tried everything to rehabilitate her. Unfortunately, she's passed away, but, you know, there's hope for individuals, and we're talking about making our society safer and then learned by an example. I mean, these all come into perspective when it comes to rehabilitating an individual. So I look forward to that legislation coming up, to support anything that we can do. I'm sure you have some great ideas, too, Chief, and I know you, I've heard you speak on this topic, Madam, go ahead, please.
Well, Senator Tyde Gray, you know, I remember Chief Marquez would, you know, back to this asset forfeiture, he would drive around with this big truck that was seized, and it said, do the deal, lose your wheels, you know, or something like that, right? But it was a message out at the time, as, as a chief of police, to say to, that they're going to ramp down, and, you know, because Chief Marquez came from that criminal investigations and special investigations, basically had a real good, you know, influence when I headed the Violent Street Crimes Task Force, you know, and, and went after some of these organizations. And the last time, back in 2003, was when the Drug Enforcement Administration actually always would produce a report, what's the drug threat situation for Guam? And they would, you know, indicate meth. Nowadays, you don't see that from, you don't see too much from the federal government giving an overview of Guam's drug threat situation. And I, I think that's something that the lawmakers, and of course, the higher-ups in coordination with the federal government, should probably even, you know, congressmen could be communicating with the federals, hey, constantly give us, what is the picture, what does the operating picture look like, you know? And maybe in coordinate with General Moyle, and, and give us that aspect, because it is, it is really an eye-opener when we can see on an annual basis that drug threat report.
Well, thank you so much for that, and yes, I do remember that time.
Yeah.
The wheels, lose your wheels. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and, and I look forward to additional legislation that would support this one.
Thank you very much, Senator Tyde Gray. With that, Senator Senn Augustin, do you have any questions or comments on Bill 239?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As I look at the bill, identifies fine of no more than $5 million or 25 year in the business. My question is, is what is the mechanism, or maybe the bill needs to be amended, to, to put in not just 5 million or forfeiture of property? Maybe that's, that needs to be added, because I don't believe the Attorney General has the right to, or the authority to go after forfeiture when it said dollars. It didn't say property, it said dollars. And I'm concerned is that if it happens to be a minor, then parents will end up paying the forfeiture. And, and that's how the message is sent out. If your child is caught with fentanyl or, or meth, you're it. And it'll take a bite. And then when it comes to, it says, or business, I think, I think it may, maybe instead of the or, or, or remove the word, if it violates a business, it shouldn't matter, because if you happen to be a business owner, forfeiture would be perfect, because then it can go more, it, it'll reach the, it'll probably won't reach the 50 million, but it'll come definitely very close to the five. And, and you know, and I'm very concerned as, as how Mr. Lomboski brought up about the, the rehabilitation, I'm concerned about that. And that's why I brought it up earlier on the other bill, about the, you know, the, the program of promoting, don't do the deal, like, like Fred, Chief brought up, you know, you do the deal, you lose your wheels. I remember that, I was in Police Department reporting, Chief, so I know what he's talking about. And back then, it was heroin was the big thing. But my concern is that 35 years, you know, we're sentencing people for drugs more than we sentence people for robbery and everything else. I think, I think we need to take a look at where, and I, I agree with the drugs, okay? We need to put them, put them away. But if there's no, there's no true rehabilitation program, in 35 years, he's out. He probably mastered the drug program in the prison. Again, I'm not saying he's not going to, but he could have, he, he could have been doing that. He could have went to law, uh, law school while he's in prison and figured out how to beat the system, versus we should be, he should, they should be getting rehabilitation. So when they get out, they don't do it no more. And, and I'm hoping that the author of the bill, who happens to be the oversight also of DOE, that when, when you start promoting, don't do the, don't do the deal, or you lose your wheels, let it be promoted also in the schools, posted all over. And, and it, and it'll work for both the pedophiles and for drugs. I mean, and that I believe would be the best route to go, because if we start teaching our kids young, at a younger age, and they see their parents or their uncles doing drugs, they'll be like, you're not supposed to do this, Mom, or Uncle, or I'm supposed to report you. It'll start turning, turning the table. Exactly, and my colleague brought up, the supply of drugs have caused the drugs to go down in price. Really? Is it really the supply coming in, or there's more labs on Guam? Because I, I remember several years back, maybe, maybe over 10 years ago, they were raiding homes that were labs. They weren't coming into the mail, they weren't coming into the port, no, they were building it here. There's labs. And, and, and that's why I brought up the forfeiture. For, for example, you find one person, he happens to own other homes, up to 5 million, we're going to grab everything you've got. But I, I believe forfeiture needs to be included in the bill, so that if they don't have the money, they got the property. Which a lot of people in Guam are, they got a lot of property but no money. Tell you what, when you start grabbing property, people start thinking about it. They lose their vehicles, they lose their house, they're safe, everything. Forfeiture would be the, I would believe, would be, be in addition to the dollar, or be, to be included as part of the dollar fine. I think it would help better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Senn Augustin. You know, that's the one thing, it's puzzling, while everything else is going up in cost on Guam, the fact that drugs are getting cheaper really tells you that, you know, the scales here are not, not balancing out. And the fact that a lot of the crimes that are impacting our people, in many ways, directly can be tied back to drug use and drug abuse. And then, as you mentioned, Attorney General, I'm, I'm very happy that the statistics were provided in terms of the deaths that we've experienced in recent years that are related directly to drug use, particularly crystal methamphetamine. And saddened to see that a majority of those that have died are, are within a very young age, and there are men in our community. The largest number are, are men, are young men in our community that are dying. And that's where things are concerning, the fact that things are now so prevalent, it's almost acceptable. And I think most of us that are law-abiding citizens, and those that have been victimized by crime related to drugs, are very angered and frustrated, and almost feel like there's no recourse. You know, what do you do with individuals that are engaged in this, that choose to engage in, in drug use and drug distribution, that are harming themselves, and also, more importantly, harming the community? Especially the law-abiding citizens of our island that, you know, go to work every day, try to make a living, only to come home sometimes and find that their home or their car has been vandalized, or they've been physically harmed in some way, or family members that have had, those that are dependent on drugs, that have stolen from them, stole, stealing from their own family to, to support their, their drug habit. What is your feeling on it, Mr. Attorney General? I mean, even though the individuals may have already committed the crime and they're being put in jail, you know, I'm of the opinion that then justice is served, because justice needs to be served. I feel there needs to be consequence when an individual's actions harm others. What is your view on that? I mean, it might not, it might not dissuade anyone from continuing to be engaged in drug sale, or manufacturing, or distribution, or whatever the case may be. This may not keep them from doing it, but how do you feel, should there be a consequence? If they choose to do it, then they should know and be aware that there will be a heavy price to pay. What is your view on that?
Well, I agree 100% that we need the tools for the law enforcement and the courts to use to address this epidemic that's going on right now. I join with Senator Senn Augustin and the other senators, Duenas, on the tough-on-crime type of approach to get the Police Department, Department of Corrections, the AG's office, the judges, and especially the legislature to pass those policies, holistic approach. I agree 100%, we can't be locking everybody up, but I mean, it's a good start that the deterrence effect occurs there. But once you lock them up, we're, we're failing, if you're from a fix-these-people approach, because DOC needs to have some sort of an intervention up there, where it's like the RSAT, that's only post-judgment type reform that you can do to try to fix these people, but you need the non-RSAT, which is the opioid council is, is provided the funding to. You literally need to take these social workers from UOG that are graduating, get them, give them the scholarships to be part of a task force specifically to help the, the meth addicts. You know, target just the meth addicts. You'll, you'll do so much reduction in crime if you can turn these people away from that destructive lifestyle. You know, and it goes into the, you know, teach kids, you know, say no to drugs, whatever the programs are that, that sing and ring. But again, this is one of the tools towards the distributors of it. But if the distributors don't have meth addicts to sell to, the price is going up, they're, they're, that's why I say, from an AG's perspective, I'm looking at it economically. The prices are going down, there's marketing reasons why they want to flood the market, create the addict, and especially the schools, those teenagers, they're ripe, just like the, what is it, the, the smoking tobacco industry, they were seen to be using marketing techniques to get the addiction, put them in the movie theater, make it cool to smoke. You know, the government of Guam needs to charge all of our, our, all three branches for fighting this epidemic. It can't just be the AG's office, because I'm just here to enforce the law, I'm not here to provide the, the therapy and the, the rehabilitation. So I agree with everything that you senators are doing right now, and I'm just targeting the problem. One of them is isolate them, make a requirement that when, like Judge Barcenas, when, I've been in his court many times, you violate my order, we're not having a hearing, probation is just going to pick you up. Magistrate judge, you're going to be released, you don't show up to that drug intervention program, just show up for it, you're automatically going to be put back in jail, automatically. Stop this due process that defeats the, the problem that we're having in our community. And, and that's why I say these are bigger problems, that it goes from when the GPD arrests them every day. And by the way, senators, I'm in the process of having my team release the daily Department of Corrections reports. I think the community needs to see those 17 people that get arrested every day, that DOC is seeing, and not just for the law enforcement to see it, but for everybody to see it, because those figures are showing PCS all over the place. The cops are arresting these people, and why? Because these guys can't drive straight. The meth addicts, they're hallucinating on the road, they're swerving in and out, they're, the, the cars are being stolen as collateral for their drug dealer, so that they can actually get more drugs. The murder that occurred, the Valentine's Day murder, those guys were scoping people, according to the, the police reports, to, to buy drugs, to pay off the, the meth addict, or I'm sorry, the meth dealer, that this, this bill is trying to approach, address. So Senator, you're, it, it's holistic. Get the courts, get the Guam Behavioral Health, they need help over this. My impression that Guam Behavioral Health needs help. They need to have an incarceration facility. Remember, meth addiction borders on mental health problems. It creates that inability to function, depending upon how deep you're into the meth. We need a place, a facility, that you can keep them locked up in, in addition to the, the overall mental health problems that our communities having, that we release these people. That's why the court created the, the Mental Health Court. Guam Behavioral doesn't have enough facility or people to help them, but we're graduating social workers at UOG. They need to be given a pro tech, and to pay it off, go to mental health and work as a social worker, go to Department of Corrections, give them a staff of people that they can treat these people while they're locked up. You know, and I think that, it's, it's a first step, and then we can find out if it's actually working, but, thank you, Senator, it's, it's a lot of different aspects.
I appreciate your, your response to that. I do want to ask, since we have the Director of Corrections here, I just have one question. And I don't know, maybe it's another piece of legislation we can work on with regards to those in law enforcement that are engaged in the distribution, sale, and delivery. And I bring it up particularly to you, Mr. Director, because we've had, you know, repeated cases, and I await the next news story on the next DOC guard that's involved in bringing contraband such as methamphetamine into the prison. What, what steps have you taken to hope that your, 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 your key staff up there, including your staff that's involved directly in engaging with these prisoners, your guards up there are not continuing that practice?
Thank you, Senator.
And long history of bringing drugs into the prison and supplying prisoners with drugs.
Thank you for that question. You know, one of the things that's really important, especially when you're, when we're dealing with, you know, drug traffickers and what's happening on our island, is, it's called intelligence-led policing, you know, and it's a strategy. We have a Marianas Regional Fusion Center. Every single thing, incident where we find drugs, including the one right now that I won't get into detail yet, because it's being federally adopted, we send that information to Guam Office of Homeland Security, the Fusion Intelligence Center, because that information sharing among, and it crosses from federal to our local law enforcement agencies. It's very vital that we might come across the same client or someone, a, a, a drug target that someone else is investigating, right? And what, and when I was, one of the things I established at Department of Corrections is what we called the Security Threat Office, right? And it's, it's going to have an intelligence unit there, and basically, some of the methods that are there is to be looking at what's And basically, some of the methods that are there is to be looking at what's happening inside the facility in terms of monitoring, who's communicating with what. We currently have even some assistance from the feds to look at some of the things that we've been confiscating, like cell phones. Cell phones have been contrabanned not only in Guam but in other prisons. And once you examine those cell phones, you'll be able to look at who's calling who from outside and inside. And it could lead to, to bigger factors, right? And we have assistance from the federal government that have come up, the FBI actually, that I have been communicating with. And I spoke to General Moylan too, and he agrees too with some of the past contrabands that we've been confiscating. Everything is reported to the Guam Police Department. And I know that General Moylan would always follow up with the Guam Police Department about those cell phones that have been confiscated at Department of Corrections. Are they being analyzed and examined? Because that's gonna be pretty good information there that might lead to bigger things. On the, on the treat, on the rehabilitation and treatment side, we're communicating with the Archase Services, Teres Tiyama, the warden. They work together in screening some of these individuals that have been sentenced already. The ones who have been brought in for drug distribution or even users. And besides the RSAT program, we have a nonprofit organization called the Vera Institute we're communicating with right now that might have a prison education program. And some of these kind of things to, to look at these individuals who have been sentenced and see what they can do to sort of like not relying on their economic situation they have and maybe, you know, pick up some training vocational skills and stuff like that. Because what attracts them into getting into the business of making a quick dollar or making, you know, it's an economic thing that they're not gonna get caught and stuff like that. And, but try to deter them and say, hey, you know, and then some of the potential jobs that they, that they may be working at, you know, or could be going into the victims', you know, the victims' compensation fund. It can go toward a portion of what they make that some employers are gonna pay them for. Could go into, you know, a fund that funds enforcement of the, of the drug, of, of the drug proceeds that they may have made a long time ago and stuff like that. These are some of the things that we hope, you know, can be, you know, can be a big factor in changing the situation that we have now. We, we've talked here and, and I've, I think I shared a lot of times with the, a lot of the things with what we're doing with our drug treatment and our incarceration of those and enforcement. But the other part is, the ed, the other part is the education piece. The engagement of some of our inmates writing and presenting to some students in medicals, in middle school or high school, their experience, not a scared straight program, but something from the heart of how they have to go through this drug cycle and, and, and the challenges they have to do. And that is effective too when they hear it from an individual who has to go through that thing. And it's like, don't, don't do drugs, that kind of program, an anti-drug program. You know, an anti-say no to drugs and stuff like that. If we reach, that's an upstream solution. If we can reach those clients at Department of Youth Affairs and reach some of the high school students and medical, middle school students from some of our inmates, not a scared straight, but basically something where, you know, they share the situation that they're going through. The freedom that they've lost a lot of the times in the confinement that they have in the park and all the families that, and the destruction that happened, that's gonna be a powerful effect, I believe, you know.
But Senator, in addition to, we met last week with the Department of Corrections Director. The Trades Program is not being adequately looked at. To give these meth addicts a certificate, whether it's a painter, electrician, things that they could actually get a certificate, earn maybe twice the amount of money of normal people. And if they want to get methed up, go work for it and buy your drugs. It's the reality of life that we have out there. And I know Senator San Augustine is a strong advocate of that. But if the, the Department of Labor, the administration, and the Director of DOC get together, and I'd be even willing to structure plea agreements so that if you can get to the point of getting a certificate, a certified license that says that you are an electrician, you can be paid this amount, or a painter. How difficult is it to paint? But these guys get a lot of money. You just have to be organized. It doesn't require DOC to make a special, you know, welding shop or whatever that would be needed. This is, this is a stuff, you give the dignity to these, because there, there, there are neighbors and our family that's out there. I've had at least two family members that have died because of meth. So it's, it's touched everybody out there. And if we can give them the dignity, it's something the Catholic Church has used in the past. The idea that you give them dignity, you give them a profession, that fishing rod example, and make it a certificate. Nothing other than a certificate would cut the, the jail time down for a meth addict or a distributor for that matter. But it gives, you know, plus it would help our fuel our construction industry with a lot of these things that are needed. So I, I thank the, the Director for allowing me to kind of comment on that because it's their Department of Corrections that keeps them and has the Trades Academy right now with GCC, I understand. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate that comment because those, those skill sets are in demand these days, so thank you. With that, Senator Canata, do you have any questions or comments on this bill?
No, Madam Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you as well. With that, if there are no other questions or comments from the panel, I'll turn it over to Senator Chris Barnett to provide questions or comments and closing statements on his bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you Director Bredalio and AG Moylan and your team for, once again, some very insightful testimony. But AG, we, we talked about the Justice Safety Valve Act. And I've had a lot of conversations with the people who talk about our meth laws on Guam. They're some of the strictest in the nation. But the problem is the discretion of the judges, especially when we talk about these first offenses and possession of, of, you know, smaller amounts of meth. Can you just maybe on the record, give your estimation on the impact that this, the discretion of these judges and deviating from the sentences laid out has had on, on our community?
This is part of the catch, release, reoffend problem, problem that Guam is experiencing. These, when we see them on the magistrate complaints, when we're doing the background checks on these people, when they start adding up the number of arrests, the, especially the convictions for them, that's a litmus test of how the justice system has released them back in the community and the recidivism they're getting back into the, the system. That's why I said, somebody check the ADC recidivism numbers. They're not publishing them, from what I understand, the last time we tried to find it. Because that's the data that you senators are asking, so that what is effective, what is not effective? But I guess, unless it, the, everybody knows that once they're convicted for the distribution, there's a lot of jail time associated with that. But the problems that we're getting are the users, including the distribution network. Those guys that are selling it out the back of their car, like, like, I think we put in our testimony, breaking down the 20 grams into one gram baggies, like I mentioned, those guys are users too. So it's, it goes all the way up, user and a distributor. And then usually the RICO statutes are dealing with the leaders in our community that may be associated with the drug world and then turning that money into certain companies and businesses. And that's where I had prior conversations with the feds. They need to audit them. They need to do those audits to detect how are they making so much money with a business that shouldn't justify that amount? That's, that's the type of group that you're looking at really, is the people that are at the top of the food chain. You know, for the distribution penalties. So those statistics for the distributors are normally the feds. And again, I, again, I defer to the feds. When they want to take a distribution case, they're better equipped, have harsher sentences, and then take them off of Guam at the end.
Yeah, but in my open, I had said that it seems like there's certain cases they're not willing to adopt. And so I feel like if we mirror some of the federal sentencing guidelines, then we kind of fill those gaps, right?
Yes, Senator, I agree with you 100%. We need this, we need this tool.
And Director Bredalio, in fact, a lot of you guys talked about the different facets of combating crisis like we have with crystal methamphetamine. Obviously, there's the enforcement. And I noticed the discussion, Director Bredalio, you're talking about do the deal, lose your wheels, right? Another one that I absolutely loved was the war on ice. And I think former Lieutenant Governor Ray Tenoriot also had one with ice will shatter your life. And these were campaigns that they had brought out into the schools. And, you know, I'm not sure if it's an issue because opioids are kind of the forefront of the conversation in the states and, and if we're getting money and we can only use it specifically for opioids. Because I know that the Guam Police Department through Sergeant Paul Tapau, they've reinstituted the Drug Awareness Resistance Education, DARE, into several, several schools. And we're meaning to see how we can expand that because we definitely have to get the message out to our youth. I mean, we are, it's very silent when it comes to what we are saying to our youth about crystal methamphetamine. And let's not forget that whether it's CPS, the foster crisis, even the previous bill where we talked about sexual assault of our youth, a lot of these violations against our community are coming from people who are using crystal methamphetamine. And those are just the, the simple facts. I did want to kind of address Mr. Lebowski, his testimony, just some of the, the points. Specifically, and I think what Mr., and some people do is they take this cookie cutter argument from the states and they kind of apply it on Guam. And I think we're a little bit different. I think people who are trafficking large amounts of crystal methamphetamine are not underprivileged or disadvantaged. I mean, these are people that have been able to start businesses, right? Multiple businesses. And, and I believe that these are people, and I only say this because, you know, I meet with a lot of law enforcement people. I mean, we had the Guam Police Department in this room saying on the record that there are a handful of drug trafficking organizations on our island, and they feel that these organizations have outsmarted them. So that tells me that we need help. And when I talk to law enforcement, the, the number one thing they're saying is that people aren't talking. That a lot of these drug traffickers are being protected by people in the, I mean, unfortunately, in our government and in some cases at the highest levels of our government. And so when we talk about the solutions, I think it's gonna take education, awareness, obviously, the enforcement. I think that we need to, and I don't think it should be a novel idea to lock up the drug dealers who are causing. I mean, they're selling these drugs. Last time I checked, it's still a crime to sell crystal methamphetamine. And the amounts that they're trafficking have led to, the price of meth is, it's a, it was $50 a gram, I know, a couple of years ago. But I think if you talk to the people who work in recovery and treatment, that it's dropped even further, right? So it is everywhere, and we are behind the curve. And I think that it's gonna take some, you know, course correction like Bill 239. And then also, across our government, we have to do the things that are proven to work. And I believe that those are our education. I mean, I'll even use the word propaganda. Yeah, I think, you know, the, my kid's grandma was showing me some old stuff, and she had these war on ice folders that we actually passed out to the kids in school because I remember I got one of them. And, you know, we had people talking to us when I was in school about the dangers of crystal methamphetamine. And this was when it was first coming out. This is back in the Kabakang days. And the problem has got a million times worse, and the effort has not gotten a million times better. And I think that's where we're at with this. I'm just not comfortable with this idea that we should look past the dealers and, you know, yeah, it's nice and well to me. I mean, they've, they've poisoned the island, they have caused the situation that, that we're in. And unfortunately, due to the inaction or inability or, I mean, God forbid, the unwillingness of our government to do what it takes to, to protect our youth and protect our people. Remember, people are dying from crystal methamphetamine. These dealers are selling drugs that people are becoming addicted to, and they're dying. The medical examiner said 37 people died from overdose deaths. He's made it a habit to test every body that comes into his office for meth. And I met with him, and he told me a lot of people are obviously on the meth. And so it is, it has touched and ruined just about every part of our lives on this island. And I think that this bill is not necessarily the silver bullet, but I think it's one part of many different solutions that we can, as a government, implement holistically. Because if we're only doing one thing and not the others, right? Ask yourself, what are we doing good right now? Treatment, obviously, there's a big demand for treatment. We're not doing that good enough. Enforcement, I mean, we wouldn't be here today if the enforcement was where we want it to be. Education and awareness, you know, God bless the Guam Police Department, those people, the DEA, HSI, who go out to the schools and talk to the kids. But, you know, we as a government, you know, the billboard approach, AG. I mean, I think that's, you're, 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 one of the meth addicts is a little controversial, of course, right? But just having this conversation, putting it out there and letting the, the kids know that, hey, these are the dangers. It's everywhere, you know, see something, say something. I think that, that these are all things that, that we have to do better as a government. We have to just never forget if, if our law enforcement, our premier law enforcement entity is saying that they've been outsmarted, then that's a major red flag to me that, that means that we need to, we need to get on the front lines and, you know, help out wherever we can.
Of the game.
So thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I look forward to the quick passage, you know, knock on wood of, of this bill. And I thank again my colleagues for their support in this introduction. And I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity this morning. See you tomorrow.
Thank you very much as well, Senator Chris Barnett. And with that, Bill 239 is duly heard. Thank you to all of you that have come and testified on this bill this morning. Next on our agenda, we'll continue on. Our third item is Bill Number 243-37COR, introduced by Senator Duane San Nicholas and Senator William Parkinson, an act to add a new section 11318 to Article 3, Chapter 11, Title 7, Guam Code Annotated, relative to removing the statute of limitations for financial and property exploitation of our, of an elderly person or individual with a disability. Before we hear from those who have signed up to testify on the bill, I would like to invite our prime sponsor, Senator Duane San Nicholas, to please introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill comes to us from the bravery of one woman. She has done everything she can to find some type of recourse, try to, she, she's been everywhere. And she came to me with this, with, with, with her concern, so that's where this comes from. So the, the financial exploitation of our manuncle is a heinous crime, and that should not have a statute of limitations because of the physical and mental constitution of the elderly victims severely impacts and hampers their ability to pursue justice. And because the crime deprives the elderly victims of their living allowance and their way of supporting themselves, akin to taking the livelihood of someone who is most likely unable to make a living anymore. According to the National Council on Aging, up to 5 million older Americans are abused every year. And the annual loss by victims of financial abuse is estimated to be at least $36.5 billion. The number of exploited elderly is astounding and justifies the creation of the legislation to combat this issue. The council also states that in about 60% of our, of elderly abuse incidents, the perpetrator is a family member, usually a spouse or, 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 or the children of the victim. A fact that makes this issue a heinous one because these perpetrators are trusted and relied on by the victims. The council further states that social isolation and mental impairment, such as dementia or Alzheimer's, are two factors that make the elderly vulnerable to abuse. Elderlies with these conditions are especially vulnerable to financial exploitation and abuse in general. All of these findings by the National Council on Aging are astounding, alarming, astoundingly alarming, something which our manuncles need to be protected from by putting the law on their side. The burden of protecting our manuncle from financial exploitation and abuse lie in the backs of our island's legislators. According to the article of financial abuse on elderly in domestic settings by the National Institute of Health and National Center for Biotechnology Information, elder abuse, like other domestic ills, has generally been considered a state concern rather than a federal concern. And that the absence of federal law pertaining to elder abuse has placed the states, placed the responsibility to define the activity as a government entity that serves the people, ilas, the turanguamahon, needs to enact legislation that would protect and help our manuncles find justice in incidents of financial and elderly abuse. The legislation, to enact a legislation that will remove the statute of limitation in cases of elderly financial exploitation and abuse. With this legislation in place, the elderly victims of financial exploitation and abuse will be able to pursue justice without added worry of a deadline to file a lawsuit. With that, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator San Nicholas. For the record, the committee requested feedback and testimony on Bill 4, I mean, 243-37COR from the following: the Office of the Attorney General, the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, and the Guam Police Department. A legal review of the bill was requested from the Legal Bureau on March 26, 2024, and a response from the Legal Bureau was received on March 27, 2024, stating the bill remains subject to review. stating the bill remains subject to review as to form and style. The summary of the bill, Bill 243-37, removes the statute of limitations for financial and property exploitation of an elderly person or individual with disability. A fiscal note, impact request was sent on August 18, 2023, and BBMR responded on August 24, 2023, stating that the judiciary of Guam believes that absent further information on the bill, the approximate fiscal impact cannot be determined at this time. As such, the bill is administrative in nature and poses no immediate fiscal impact on any of the funds of the government of Guam. The committee will now receive testimony on the bill. We've had a number of people sign in, to include Louis Harley, Lila Pearson, Yolanda Elliott, Ray King, and of course, our Attorney General, Douglas Moylan. With that, to provide testimony, I'll call up Ms. Lila Pearson. Would you like to come up to provide testimony on this bill? With that, then Attorney General Moylan will have you provide testimony.
Thank you. You know, senators, with all due respect, it's about time. In our court system, there are too many of our manomko that are being found out in guardianship cases and in probate cases, that their lifetime savings have been taken from them, especially by their own family members that are quote unquote caregivers. There's constant cases that are in our court right now, the SP case numbers, the special proceedings, where our manomko, and I will digress a moment. In the code, the guardianship code, it already recognizes that as people age, memories become not as sharp, they become deadened. That is not the category of cases that deal with dementia and Alzheimer's, which is neurological deterioration, it's, and Parkinson's disease. It's a separate category, but as we age, everybody's memories through the natural processes become not as sharp as they used to be. Guam is experiencing the full spectrum of problems right now in our family courts. And it's usually tied in with the probate code, the guardianship code, they're kind of overlapping. This bill addresses the manomko and the, I guess, the persons that with disabilities category, which is important. One, one technical note, you may want to make it retroactive, because the applicability right now is from today forward, if the bill passes into law. So for those people who, with, I want to say crime, but for the wrong that has occurred, the tort that has occurred, they should have the ability to pursue recovery on behalf of the, the manomko or the persons with disabilities in advance of that. This, the statistics are, are, have made it all through, up to the banking community. People that are older traditionally have used their lifetime to acquire assets, hence the life savings, all the property, both real and personal, jewelry, you name it. We all have grandparents and great grandparents and parents that are in that category. What we have seen in our communities, and this goes to the United States as well, that they become victims of those that are supposed to be the caregivers. From a legal perspective, we call it a fiduciary duty is normally imposed. I invite the senators, you senators, to consider statutorily putting into the code a restriction of anyone who qualifies as a caregiver to be prohibited from self-dealing. Whenever you see a property deed that goes from a manomko to a family member, those should go into a different level of scrutiny. Whenever there's an allegation that makes it to the court where the court has to determine, did the parent really love this person over another person? Once you hit the level of a caregiver, where your parent relies upon you for paying the bills, for managing their money, anything where a caregiver is usually qualified, you get denominated, you no longer have the right of self-dealing without certain triggers occurring. In the, in the law, they normally make arguments before the judges that, hey, they have to have an attorney, the, the manomko matriarch or patriarch, before they give that property to one of eight or five different children, that they have to have an independent assistance of counsel. And especially once it's triggered, where there's an allegation of dementia or Alzheimer's, which is a neurological disease, that a doctor would clearly be able to, to determine, or Parkinson's for that matter, that you cannot have self-dealing. When a person steps in as a caregiver, everything you do has to be for the individual. And the legislature, I respectfully suggest, should make it a statement in the code, that if that money goes into your bank account, that you better have a good reason that it was to pay that power bill, or to pay something on behalf of the manomko. Otherwise, step away from that caregiver role. In the past, we used to see it during the probates, when all the property has to be identified of the person that passed. And that's when the other family member starts seeing, this person who was with them at the end started taking everything, you know, years before they died. But nobody knew about it, because everybody was in their own job, raising their own families. But the person who was supposed to take care of them didn't do it. Probate, that's where it would come out, and then the fights would start there. We're getting many more people now in the guardianship court, and hence the whole idea of the public guardian. She was created, I believe it's Marcy Cruz still, Marcy Santos. She is the person that's tasked with this, but I can tell you right now, she's overwhelmed with the amount of complaints out there. Also, senators, please consider putting in a Good Samaritan type of provision, that if a family member or anybody attempts to uncover the wrongdoing that has occurred, that the estate or the person that did the wrongdoing is responsible for paying for that person's costs and legal fees. Oftentimes, you get other family members that have to go in during a guardianship case or a probate matter for that point, and they fight the person that has now all the assets, to disgorging the assets and give it back to the family member or their estate. The, right now, the courts are using the substantial benefit test. They adopted it from other states that deal with the situation where a caregiver has taken something, and somebody has to come in. Most people don't have the money, the energy, or the resources to hire a lawyer to fight, to restore the manomko with what's rightfully theirs. The public guardian is supposed to do that, but they don't have the, she doesn't have the resources to do for all these cases that are going on out there. To build in a right of reimbursement of attorney's fees towards not just the fact that you restore the, the property, but maybe some other things as well. The fact that they've had the guardianship changed from a person that was not capable or should not be the guardian, that should be reimbursable to the, the Good Samaritan. I call them the Good Samaritan, whether it's a family member or non-family member. And if, as you senators know, the guardianship code is structured around relying on family members, because nobody out there knows the family member better than those people around them. And there should be an incentive built in, and I suggest to the statute, that's a good start, to give the reimbursement of attorney's fees and costs to any Good Samaritan that tries to, to help the manomko out. I will note that in the Adult Protective Services Act, you have abuse that ranges from physical abuse, and I think the ones that we're most worried about in this statute is the material abuse. They specifically have it in the APS statute. And I will say that APS does not have the resources either to protect our manomko. They're good at receiving the complaints, but it takes a lot, because they don't know anything. They don't know the personalities involved in the, in, you know, which family member is really the good one, which was the one that was trying to take the money, those sorts of things, let alone the attorneys that you need to do to subpoena records to get it from the bank, how these monies were transferring over the years, and how it ended up in the caregiver's name, as opposed to the, the remaining in the manomko's name. This is the type of abuse that's going out there, senators, and the biggest of our families are experiencing it. As our lives are pushed further into the centurion type of the late 80s, 90s, there is, there is a greater need for protection. And I think this is, I applaud the, the sponsor of the bill, Senator S. Nicholas, for taking up this, this challenge. Our code is in need of protection right now. Our manomko are in need of protection out there. And they need to have the, the tools to, to do that. And then some form of reimbursement for what, what injury is occurring. So we fully endorse it, the AG's office, the Adult Protective Services is one of our, our, the clients under the government of Guam, and I think that this is a, a good bill to do. Thank you.
Attorney General Moylan for providing your testimony. With that, Senator Luhon, do you have any questions or comments on this bill? Senator Luhon? You're good? Okay. Senator S. Augustine, do you have any questions or comments on this bill?
The only thing I'm concerned about is, I like the bill. I just hope that it doesn't allow beyond the life of the elderly. In other words, not the estate going to keep suing, because when, when, when the individual was alive, that's what they pursued. No, when the person passed, case ends. Can't keep going, can't keep going after somebody that's gone. That, that's the only provisions I like put here.
And that often happens, Senator. So I agree that, that, I know normally, the guardianship ends when the person dies, but the claim should be transferable to the probate court. So I agree that the statute of limitations should not end. But I mean, the, the probate court then takes jurisdiction over, over the, the assets?
Right. No, no, I have no problem when you go to probate, you know, when you go to probate, you determine what you have. But when you're making a claim, when the elderly is making the claim, I just, I would just support it more that when, when he, if he or she passes, the claim ends. I don't, I don't like, I mean, it's the elder that suffered. It's not the state, it's not anybody else. It's only, like, if, if I file a claim against whoever, if I pass, I don't want anybody else getting what I, what I could have gotten. That's my, that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't support giving it to anybody in my estate. No, it's, it's over.
Let me build on that. The, it usually ends up in the, the probate court, once they take over. So what you're saying has merit, but it's usually the probate proceedings that will limit it. The way I saw this was, like, just say they started to take the money or do these financial wrongdoings when the person was 60. And they, it ended up, you know, they lived another 40 years, things, things like that. A statute of limitations might affect the ability to go back to when they were 60 years old and were manomko, or whenever the, the legal age for a manomko is. So that's what I would be concerned about. But then also, what do you do?
I'm only referring to when, when the victim passes away.
Right.
The, the, whatever he filed, ends. As long as he's still alive, no problem, no statute limitation. He can keep suing forever, as long as he stays alive. I don't, I don't see it.
It would give an incentive to kill off the manomko.
I beg pardon?
It, it would give the incentive that you want the manomko to, to pass away. And I'm not saying that it hap, well, I'm not saying it always happens, but I've seen families where you kind of wonder, did they get the medication when they should have? There becomes an incentive to want to end the statute of limitations by the passing.
I'm only referring to that if I'm suing, if I'm going after my own kids.
Right.
Right? If it drags for 20 or 30 years, I, I must have the wrong lawyer. Okay?
Yeah.
And, and if I can't settle this case, I don't want anybody else that, for example, I have 10 kids, and I'm suing one, the other nine is going to benefit when they have no business, it was me, it was me that suffered from that individual. That's what I'm after.
My understanding, senators, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is for especially the disabled or the mentally weak manomko, so they wouldn't be getting an attorney. It would be the eldest that has been away from the house, comes back and finds out the house is now in the, the youngest one, and is mortgaged up the hill, and is on meth, and whatever else is going on in their life. This is where another family member would normally come in and not have to face a statute of limitations defense, that you didn't come in soon enough, or even that the person passes, because whether we talk about the person being alive and benefiting from getting their resources back, or the person's estate, for example, they make a will, they make a will, and the manomko wants to give it to, you know, everybody equally, you know, something like that. But then that child or whoever caregiver took all the property five years before the death. If you stop the statute of limitations upon the death, then you, you cut off, and the person has already started a lawsuit, right, to, to restore the property to the estate, then the manomko is hurt in, to the extent that their will, literally their will, their desire to transfer that property to a family member or all of them has been cut off. That's what I'm kind of wondering.
Attorney General, if you had a child and took your property five years before you died.
Or 10, yeah.
Or 10, or whatever number of years, and you didn't get the property back, and you didn't go to court? Oh, well, I'm just saying that if you wanted to sue or go after anybody, as long as you're still alive, go for it. That's all I'm saying, because statute of limitations referring to you being able to do it. If you die, who is going to get it?
But what would you do with the lawsuit that was still ongoing at the time of the death? That, I can see statute of limitations, yes, you'd have to file it before the death. I think I, I can agree with that. Yes. But if the, the lawsuit is ongoing and the person dies, they should be able to maintain it. I don't think you're talking about that.
No, I'm referring to that.
I hear you.
If you wanted to, if you wanted to go after somebody, stay alive.
Yeah.
File it. When you pass, the court will figure it out. But there, you can't file it, you can't file it anymore if you're dead already.
Yeah.
I don't want anybody in the state saying, no, I want you to still represent my father. No.
You are correct. I believe that that would achieve the intent of the, the author. It's while the person is alive, you, you must initiate the lawsuit or, yeah, statute of limitations.
Yeah, not the state going after, no, I need to do this for my father, because back then, he, he told me this. No, he didn't.
Yeah. So the idea is to follow the suit.
That's what I'm going after. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Point well taken.
Hope I didn't confuse everybody.
I, I'm a little confused, but thank you, Senator S. Augustine. With that, Senator Kanata, do you have any questions or comments on this bill?
No, certainly support my colleague on this legislation. I think it's a timely legislation and definitely want to see its passage. So I wish him all the best on his legislative journey. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Kanata. I mean, I, I just want to clarify, because I understand your point, Attorney General. I don't want to be the elderly that files, and my child decides, because they took something from me, that they're going to contribute to my demise, so that my, my court case against them may end. Fortunately, I only have one child, so. But I just want to clarify that, because that is a concern. I mean, the estate itself, even though you, the, the individual has passed away, you want the ability, certainly if they had filed a case for the estate, to pursue, if, if they've been wrongly, something has been taken from them, that their estate will still be able to file against it and distribute it as that individual had desired, even upon their deaths. So I want to make sure we have no confusion about that, because I don't think we can allow an injustice to continue simply because someone has passed away. And as we are towards the end of our life, we have less time, you know, obviously, as we're all experiencing that. Earlier, they brought up the name Judge Abadi. We remember Judge Abadi. Younger ones don't, but for those of us that are a little older, we certainly remember him. He was a tough guy.
Fire and brimstone.
We need a few more of those. Panel, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Senator Chris. I don't want to forget you. You're so used to being the first one, but, but Senator Chris, you're, you're certainly recognized to provide any comment or testimony on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you to the AG. Long morning. Appreciate all of your input this morning. And I definitely support the legislation. I commend the author for filling this gaping hole in our laws. I've met, you know, unfortunately, it's very sad. I've met with a few manomko over the course of this term who've shared with me the ways that they have been swindled, that would, I mean, the complication of, of these crimes in my mind would put even, you know, most, the most detective show, you know, the shame, because they're, I mean, they're going, it's, it's devilish, really. And so I commend the author for, again, addressing this need. And in fact, I know that you had said that we should make it retrospective.
Yes.
How, how do we do that?
Just like they did for the statute of limitations for like sex crimes, they took away the statute of limitations retrospectively as well. This can be applied to retro, retroactively, I guess. I can get the language.
Okay, yeah. No, because I'm just thinking of, again, a case I, specifically where I met with an individual who, yeah, again, the, the means and the ends that these people are going through to swindle their own family members.
Swindle is a word, right.
Especially on an island where we're raised to revere and cherish and respect our manomko. I mean, it's, it's heartbreaking that this legislation is needed. But again, I commend the author for introducing it. And thank you for your support of it also, AG. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator Chris Barnett. And certainly, I, I agree with you. I think it's, you know, the bills that we've heard this morning all collectively, you know, address the ills that are happening in our community, from drug abuse to the abuse of our elderly. and certainly to my colleagues for being here this morning to speak out on the bills that are being provided. And, you know, the challenges are still out there. We certainly want to be able to ensure that our statutes are put in place so that we can protect those that are the most vulnerable. And definitely, as with this bill, our elderly are also very vulnerable. So I am supportive certainly of the initiative by Senator S. Nicholas. We'll support his bill. Hopefully, we'll be able to co-sponsor his bill as well. So with that, thank you. Attorney General, do you have any further comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, if not, thank you all of you for your support and your presence today. And with that, we will conclude our hearing on this bill, on Bill 243. It's duly heard. And with that, it is now 11:26. Oh, yes, Senator S., do you have any closing comments you would like to make on your bill?
Yes, Madam Chair. When I was young, my grandmother, my nana, we helped take care of her, you know, during her twilight years. And I remember her telling me once, she goes, "Guahu saina parhavu." "Guahu saina." I never fling that word around just because it was a title for anybody. It's very deep. "Tadum." That word, "saina," "tadum," it's very deep. And I'm so happy that this bill was brought, we worked together with this bill. It could possibly be the first of its kind in the nation. And I think our manomko who, you know, are sainas, very deep, very tadum, we have to protect them. I've always advocated that. Sometimes at the end of my, of our public hearings, I said, "Love our manomkos." It's one of those things that just makes us chamoro. It's part of that culture that we have. And I think we've, over the years, we've kind of like forgotten that. So this is a return, restoration of the dignity to our manomkos. And I applaud the one person that has advocated for this for the longest time. And I'd like to thank you, Attorney General, for your kind and your reassuring words and your support for this measure. And I thank you all for being here. Madam Chair, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator S. Nicholas. And with that, for all those who have testified orally or have not yet testified, the committee will continue to accept written testimony on Bill 243 for the next five working days up until April 8, 2024. And testimony can be emailed to senatorsurlahi@guamgmail.com or hand-delivered to her office here at the Guam Congress Building. The hearing is now adjourned, and the time is now 11:28 a.m. Thank you, and situsmasi to all of you for your participation.